All right, we're gonna call me into order. It's our study session on August twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. We're gonna be discussing our Board of Education goals and our Board of Education evaluation of ourselves. Why don't we begin with the evaluation? What I'd like to do in the interest of time, because we do have a strategic plan study session, and we have an hour, I think we set aside for this today, so we'll be mindful of our diatribes, which I know we all tend to go off on sometimes, in a good way, but we gotta be mindful of that today. So, is there extras, Michael?
Yes, thank you.
So what we can do is one of two things. We can review what everybody has to contribute, and then we can assemble it, either email or text, and then synthesize it into one evaluation. Mandy, I don't know, I'm not gonna volunteer you to do that again, but I heard you say earlier something else, I really wanna do it.
She got skills.
I don't wanna take that very.
Alright, you say it that way.
And that's how you delegate.
Yeah, that's very good.
Well, it works.
Mandy, look great there. Are you cold? Can you use my jacket?
I've done that before.
Okay. Don't bring it for me. All right, so I just broke it up into two things, commendations and recommendations online. I'm happy to share with what I wrote.
Do you wanna share that now? Is it on the drive? Can you share it now so I can look at it, or?
It's on my, yeah.
You can share.
Can I share some?
Yeah, you can add me as a.
I pretty well did the same thing, Noah.
Okay, I just emailed you my copy. Basically, Mary, do you wanna start and we'll go around, or?
No, I'll let you start as president, Rochelle.
Okay, so for commendations, here's what I wrote. The Board has worked tirelessly in aligning its mission and vision with the district's strategic plan. This is evident in the planning, executing, and revisiting of the plan and its measurement tools. Over the course of the last year, the Board has seen progress on most areas of its strategic plan. The Board has also made great progress in building cohesiveness with itself and with the community through attending CSBA, AEC, and various local school events as much as possible. The Board is well-read and prepared for its meetings and discussions. Those are my commendations, my recommendations. Although this Board has met and continues to meet the three goals outlined in the two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three document, there is still room for improvement. The biggest area being to better understand and remind ourselves the role of a Board member. Too often, we get mired in the minutia of running the district, where we need to be focused on those items that are truly within our wheelhouse. Board members also tend to work individually and not as a team when asking staff questions and making requests. Proper governance ensures that we come together as a unit to address issues. Items can be placed on the agenda as a discussion, and the Board, working as an entity, can inquire from staff information needed to guide their decision-making process. I have seen countless Q and As from individual Board members that consume staff time but result in no cohesive decision-making on behalf of the Board. I must emphasize that it is within a Board member's rights, this is important, it is within a Board member's rights to inquire about any aspect of the district so long as it pertains to providing information to the entire Board to make informed decisions. I also feel the Board members must continue to practice the protocols put in place when dealing with issues from parents, staff, or administration. We are at our best when we take ourselves out of the equation as problem solvers. We need to continue to redirect issues to the proper staff members and copy the superintendent on these redirects at all times. Now, this, in my history of being here, we all fall into this. Some of us, not even intentionally, but it's something to be mindful of, because it just leads us to crossing lines that sometimes we shouldn't be crossing, not in a very bad way, but when we undermine administration by trying to take on problems of our own, we cannot properly evaluate the administration anymore. That's why I'm an advocate of making sure that administration and staff is made fully aware of all of the issues that come to us from parents and other staff, because if we take that away from an administration, when it comes time for us to evaluate, we've cut our legs off from under us, and it makes it really hard for us to see if Michael's doing his job, or for him to see if his principals are doing their jobs. And that, I think, is one of the most important things, because that is our purview, is to evaluate Michael. And we need to be able to evaluate him honestly, and if we start getting involved in solving problems, it takes that away. This is not saying we can't talk to people, we just, we are not there to solve problems unless they've gone through the steps of, did you talk to your teacher? Did you talk to your administrator? Did you talk to an assistant? Did you talk to the superintendent? When they have gone through all that, then we welcome the conversation, and that's.
But I still always inform Michael when I'm having conversations that I think something could be dangerous or problematic, because otherwise it's, I didn't know.
It's not, this is not directed.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
We all, we all, I, I, I think it's, it's self, for me, it's.
When I hear things that are a pattern, I don't always wait until they trickle up and blow up. I think that they need to, I, I err on oversharing with you, 'cause it's your school district.
But, but I think that it's, what is important is if you do hear something, I do want to know.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Like, that is absolutely critical, that, you know.
I want you to know everything I know.
It's, I think we both, aren't we all, share this kind of no surprise.
And that's, that's, that's not where.
I think that's really a great.
And that's, I, I agree with that, because we wanna always keep informed. It's helping to redirect those people that come to us to the proper channels.
Right.
That's, otherwise, we can't keep a good system in place.
Got it.
And that's, and that's what we wanna be able to do. So that's, that's it. Otherwise, I really, in thinking of all the past boards I've worked with, we, we are, because of the work we do, attending things and, and being seen together, and we have become more cohesive. Whether we agree with everything or not, we have to remember, it's not our job to agree with each other all the time.
Yeah.
That's okay, it's okay.
We don't need to be a five and O board.
We don't need to be a five and O. We wanna be, we really wanna be a four and one at the most, that's what we've always learned, but, but I have enjoyed that aspect of this Board, that we are cohesive, and we can see each other, and there's a camaraderie outside the boardroom whether we agree on issues or not. And I think that tone that we've set, they read the community pledge at the BV meeting today, and they seem to take it seriously over there, which was nice to see, and, and the principal was talking about how, Rochelle and I were there, the principal was talking about how the kids are like self-managing on the lunch line right now.
They're standing in line.
They're staying, they're behaving, and it's like, I'd like, maybe it's.
We set the bar really high.
Maybe, right, maybe it's, uh, maybe it's, it's, maybe it's that, that trickle effect of the, the ripple effect.
Maybe they heard the message, maybe they got the message.
Beating it over and over, it's everybody says, but anyway.
Now, maybe it's the start of the year, everyone's.
So I do, like I said, I've had, I've had, those, and listen, for, for areas to improve that I feel we can improve as a Board, it's very minor, and I think we're doing a great job, guys, I really do. I'm very proud of us. We've stuck together, we've gone through, we've had our differences. I know, I know, we've all had our differences on stuff. It's okay, as long as we work together. That's what's more important, and I think we're able to overcome that.
It's okay, what's the expression? It's okay, it's okay to have the opposite, and it's okay to be different.
It's okay to disagree.
Let's agree to disagree.
We agree to disagree.
Yeah.
Because we underst, we understand, I think we understand each other a little better, you know, it helps manage. Okay, Mary?
Um, I'm just gonna briefly say some things, 'cause I think everything, I agree with everything that you said.
Wait, before you, is that, is it possible for you to share that with me eventually?
Yes.
So I don't have to sit here and swear, okay. So share it on the.
So you can. So the main thing I would say, I agree that everything you're saying, I really feel that the Q and A has really helped us this year with tying that to the agenda, and I think that it's enabled the Board to be even more informed, and so we're making better decisions in that way. So I really appreciate that this year. Um, I would say that when we think about just our working together as a Board and really making that as a goal last year, and working together as a team, and having that trickle down for the community with like the community, with the community pledge, I think we really have created a really strong Board, and I feel the same, so I just wanna reinforce what you're saying. I really do enjoy our discussions and how we're operating as a Board and as a governance team. I think it's great, and we should continue that. Um, the other thing I would say is that, um, my one recommendation is that when we talk about, and this is more specific, is just the timing, and we talked about this last time, the timing of how we do our planning for, like, we had great check-ins for the strategic plan, but really looking at that calendar and putting more time in there and moving it up so that we can be more proactive even than we are now. That would be my one recommendation.
And I did share some dates, just, I think it was in the Board connection. And I can make copies of this, what I put in there, just when the, when the team is here, because we try to move some things up, but it's, it's difficult to, based on where some of that data is available, so perhaps if the Board is willing, when we're talking about the strategic plan, we can kind of have a discussion about these dates, so that, I want them to work for you. But there's also, there were some, some issues with how the quarters fall, some of the testing, but, but I'd like to do that with you rather than.
That's what you were gonna share with us when we do the strategic plan?
Yeah, I thi, I thought I put it in the Board connection, maybe I didn't. I, it was a very, very busy weekend, so I can't remember.
I didn't imagine.
I thought I put it in that Board connection.
The dates?
The dates.
I don't think I saw the dates.
Okay, maybe they won't.
I could be wrong.
I didn't see any.
It was.
Okay.
I wanted to ask one more question. Well, later I'll ask it, it has nothing to do with this.
I'll make.
Well, we should, is Mary finished?
Uh, one other thing I would suggest, when you bring up the Q and As, in terms of helping, um, new Board members, and also sometimes things come up from the past, and again, and we may have already discussed them in Q and A and meetings prior, keeping some sort of a log with our Q and A, because I think it's really a great resource to be able to refer back to so that we don't put as much work as well on staff. If we went through this and we referred, we answered certain questions prior, even if it's online, or however we do that, I'm not sure, but they're very valuable, and I think it's an important resource.
I have a Q and A to the Board connection vault.
I have.
To have, do the log of it.
Okay, yeah, like a folder, and then.
Yeah, like you, we do with the Board connection, so we can.
We can do that.
I'd, I'd like to mention one thing about the Q and A, which I think has been a big help to you, Michael, and that is when I read it,
To me?
that somebody's already asked the question that I also have, so you don't have, you know, you're, you're not trying to synthesize a bunch of questions, and they're repeated over and over, so there's no sense in my asking the question.
Yeah, I think it's helpful, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I think I found that very helpful.
'Cause we see it, and then you don't need to ask it again. Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you wanna go first?
When you can, please do show that to me, 'cause I won't, so I can have everything you said. Okay.
Rochelle, would you like to go?
You got stuff written down?
Just a couple things, but I don't mind either way. Okay, um, agreed on all the commendations, one hundred percent. Um, I also felt in regard to the timing, um, a one-month bump could be helpful, um, and, so that's
On what?
the timing of the, um, strategic plan and the various, uh,
Plan, okay.
Planning.
planning sessions, just so that we're, um, really looking ahead instead of looking behind. And then also, um, sometimes I forget, but when I ask questions on a certain topic, or you might notice that there's like three or four questions that I ask, the way I present it to Michael is, can you inform the Board on these? Because I want us to all have the same information. I don't wanna be privy, my intention is not to.
Well, and he always does, even when he does get, I know, but, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've always, I've always done.
Yeah, yeah. Does say a Board member has.
Yeah, and if you guys are asking questions, I definitely wanna hear about this information.
Yeah, I, I don't put names, because it doesn't matter who.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Um, one recommendation I had is, um, having just done the five Migs, which I acknowledge are, um, very time-consuming, but I learned so much. It's one thing that I do think that we should, I don't know that we can require it of one another, but I do think it's something that we should, um, highly recommend to Board members. Um, maybe we can recommend a broad timeframe, like within the first two years of, you know, it's not that I want everyone to squeeze in in the first ninety days, but I think it is so valuable to do the Migs. Um, and I would say definitely before a presidency or something where you're like governing, um, because ultimately, it, it really helps in the training, I would say. Um, and I think that if we are promoting excellence, then I would say that starts with us too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so also you'll send me share as a shared document, and I will be able to.
Yes, ma'am. You got it.
You got it. Rochelle.
Okay, um, well, I went through the goals as one, and felt that, number one, we did a very good job of meeting our goals, and number one, except for possibly one exception, and that's just something you can't do it all at once, but we remind ourselves to keep going, and that is the strategic, uh, the Board policies and administrative regulations that we try to, I know that how busy we've been all year and so on, but we did, we sort of took a little bit of a break between what we did with nine hundred and six hundred and two hundred, or two thousand, and we haven't done anything since. And I thought there was a little bit of a leg break where we might have been able to revisit some of the more, or some of the less extent, extensive ones.
Yeah.
I, I thought that that was something we didn't do and we should have done, uh, I, and I, it was because we forgot about them or anything, but, but then I have a question about this, because, and this has nothing to do with that, that's in my recommendation, by the way, that we, we, you saw in today's agenda, that the CSBA things, that they're making recommendations for our policies, some of the six thousand policies.
Yes.
At, when the summer, summer school and one other one.
Yeah, yeah.
My question is, are those now coming to us as revised from them? Or are those the suggestions they make as a result of what we gave them originally with the first six thousand? We did the six thousands.
So some of them that you're seeing are, they're new, um, so CSBA will send us, um, you know, there's some of the nine thousands that are gonna be coming up, a few. Sometimes it's just a word, sometimes it's a sentence, sometimes.
Well, this one was pretty extensive, I think.
Yeah, this one, yeah, so this, it, it, I, I'm not sure if this one was just from CSBA, or that, this one's what, I believe that the reason this is changing, 'cause the ELOC grant is, um, is, that's new, that's, you know, that's after COVID support, so I think they're getting their handle on, you know, how that's, how it's being processed.
They, they go through all of our, uh, Board policies and, uh, regulations?
They don't go through our Board policies.
They don't, but.
We do that.
We did that then, so those are ours, and we're gonna resubmit to them for approval, is that?
Yeah.
Is that, that's what I wanted to know, because I didn't know where they came from.
Yeah. That's exactly how that works.
I could have asked that question tonight, but I.
That's all right, that's, you can, and you can ask it again, but it's, uh, good. Sometimes it's, it's from CSBA. Sometimes it's because, you know, we've had an experience with something, um, that's not working, and then we'll bring it to your attention, you know, that way. So it could be, it could be an internal recommendation, but ninety-five percent of the time, it's always coming from CSBA.
Okay, and, and the other, one of the others that stuck out in my mind, and of course I mentioned it once before, so not to belabor it, to adhere to the Board governance items and be more considerate in the length of comments during Board discussions. Now, I, I realize, you know, first person has the first, has a while, you know, but I, when I was president, tried to circulate it around so everybody got a chance, and that wouldn't be so much evident that you always got to be first. That might be something you might want to look at in the Institute again, that was a suggestion, but that's just my, okay, as the, number two, I can't say one word about that one in terms of what we be as a community, as a Board group have done. We have been unbelievable in being committed to our community and to our stakeholders with study sessions, surveys, town halls, site visitation, and given the opportunity, community to be completely informed. I think we've done that. Uh, we've attended and participated in our organization, CSBA, AEC, AYSO, just in case, PTA, City Council Commission meetings, all of that keeps us right up there in the, in the public eye. And, uh, and we respond to questions and concerns, uh, that the administrators make. The administrators are like, maybe making responses to the questions that we get. I have only one thing on this, and that is, um, and that is, I would love to see the community speaker maybe every now and then during the year relative to whatever the month is. I thought that sort of fell out of the, but
Sort of bring that back.
under a strong time constraint.
Time constraint.
Yes, I, I really want that. And, um, the other thing, of course, to keep in mind during our study sessions with strategic plan, that we can't be right on target, because sometimes we don't get the information we need
Right.
to make those decisions and know how we've done, and that has to be something that would come later. Lastly, but not.
Sorry, Rochelle.
Okay, I mean, that's, there's nothing we can do about it, unless we change the schedule and.
Well, I think it's according to what Judy said, is that we, we wanna get these, the information will only help us at a certain point. If it's done after the fact, it's not gonna help us, and it's a futile exercise, and I think you put it best, right? We wanna, we wanna do it.
Okay, my suggestion, okay, my suggestions, and I like to things, you, brief, on point, et cetera.
Be qualit effective, not after.
I would like to see us change this whole document and leave one and two, but delete number three by combining one, four, and five into one statement, which could be, in keeping with our mission of educational excellence and the spirit of our community, we, we the Board need to hold our responsible and others if possible, blah, 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 blah. And I think bullets two and three, in number, the last one, could be, could be combined and added to number one goal, this one.
Rochelle, I'm so sorry, are you looking at the governance handbook or the goal?
No, forget the goal.
I'm looking at the goal.
Oh, you said one, four, and five.
Yeah, 'cause you said one, four, and five.
One, four, and five, she wants to move.
And additional goal for number two could be to combine goals one, four, and five from number three.
Oh, from number three, got you.
From number three.
One.
One bullet, one, four, and five.
Oh, the goal.
Got you.
And then taking the rest of it and making it a bullet for number one, to the number one goal.
Okay.
I, I think that simplified as much as possible.
One, four, and five, two, under two, yeah.
So there's only two main goals?
Two main goals.
And we'll take those bullet points, put them under one, and the other one's under two?
Right.
Okay.
That would be my main, because.
So send it to, send it to Rochelle.
I think that's a great recommendation.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Consolidate.
Yeah, I, I, this is too wordy. Number three is too much of nothing, as far as I can see.
Well, it was really important last year.
Huh?
Pull it out.
No, it was, it was.
It was very difficult to pull that together, but now I was looking back on it, I'm thinking, why can't we consolidate it?
Yeah.
No, I think last year we were highlighting it, and now that we've incorporated it so much into our activity,
Okay.
it's a perfect time to now.
So yeah, one, four, and five. Okay. Into goal number three, so take all these guys, put it into three, and get rid of the rest.
That's a great idea.
We have only two goals now.
Yeah, right, so, no, goal number one.
No, no, she's, no, she's saying on goal number three on the next page.
Right, take, but take the bullet points from goal number two, and put, you said put it under goal number three.
Oh, yeah. Three.
No.
Well, put it in number.
She said bullet points two.
Bullet point two and three are goal number one.
Go under number one.
Bullet. No, additional goal for number two.
Combining for goal for number two, combine, additional goal for number two would be to combine numbers one, four, and five.
For. Of goal number two.
No, on three, of three.
Then, oh, can I say it a different way?
Additional goal for.
We have goal number one, goal number two, and goal number three, and then we have sub-items, one.
Additional goal for number two, which is the one. Take one, three, four, and five from number three, and put them in two.
I see.
You're gonna look at one, four, and five, and put these to number two. Right, and then two and three go to one.
Yes, I understood you.
Yeah.
Very good.
I'm sorry, but you know, I, I.
Okay, so then with these guys, nothing.
I don't, no, leave them the others the way they are, 'cause they are the way they are.
Yeah, please. Rochelle, that sounds great, okay.
Really great.
The other one, sorry, took me off.
And I don't know if we should, what maybe, um, I would suggest maybe we, your idea about rotating, uh, who starts first, if that's something you wanna put in the governance handbook, or if it's something that you wanna start at, you know, in December, like, make a decision on. I, I'm open to rotating.
So maybe like every other one, it goes this way, and then the next session goes this way?
I think it's nice. Yeah, yeah, this is one.
No, 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 I, 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 I remember I did, then I go to the next, and I kept a record.
Yeah, I, yeah, we talked about that.
And it, it was challenging because of Zoom.
I, I did not like the fact that, I, I mean, I love being first this year that I was, but.
But you would like to be last, or the other.
Yeah, and I said, you know, why can't they alternate it?
Yeah, so I.
I'm fine with that.
So I used to have, um,
That's up to the president, I think.
some board presidents like have a, you know, it's kind of like, it looks like a little bingo card, but it's kind of like, where, you know, on, so you don't really have to.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, Pam made that schedule up for me.
Yeah, actually, I used to do that.
It's like the B D bell, it's like the B D bell schedule.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Right.
It rotates the morning session. Well, I'm just saying, I'm open to that, and I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the value in it.
I'll, I'll start now if you guys want.
Okay.
I'll start now.
We'll start tonight.
Well, I, no, I think it, I, I, it's unnecessary to, you know, it's up to you.
Am I starting with you tonight, and then starting with you?
Start with Judy tonight.
Okay. That's fine.
There's no time like the present.
I'm happy if you guys are happy, and I feel it's very inclusive approach.
It's a new school year, Rochelle.
Yeah, I, I like hearing.
You all gonna get a chance to speak.
Yeah.
So summarize again, how, like, how we do it?
Yeah, but it's nice to have other people.
First it will be Mary, starting the first discussion item, and moving on. Then the next discussion item, I would speak first.
Yeah. Right.
That's how we do it.
I, I didn't do it by the item, I did it every, every meeting.
Meeting.
Oh, okay.
So that's very difficult, it's very, very.
Yeah.
It's a reverse.
We wanted it that way, so that's why you, you.
That's maybe a more simple approach.
It's, it's easier, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Very difficult to do it by a, each item, but it's easier to have it by that day.
I can just roll the dice, I'll call the number.
Or you could do it, they do it in the classroom, they take out a number from a jar.
However, you guys run, I'm very open to it, and.
Yeah, the, 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 the.
I, I think it is like that, because they still feed it around and not always.
The flaps are, yeah.
They did.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I got it.
I would say, please implement something, whatever, at your discretion.
Yeah, how about if we let the, um, President chooses how they rotate, but will rotate?
Yes.
It rotates.
Is that an agreement?
Yeah, that's my sense.
Okay, what do you think, Rochelle?
Say it again.
President chooses. President will choose how he rotates, but we will rotate. She's thinking about that.
Good? Rochelle?
I'm.
Good.
Okay.
Mandy, your turn.
Okay.
I'm not the president, Mandy.
I, I'm not either.
Starts there.
Okay, so I like what every, what everyone shared. I don't have a lot more to add. For number one, evidence, I would say is the culture of excellence was underscored by the commitment to the community pledge and its implementation. I like that we have a multiple mid-year, um, review of strategic goal progress, but I understand the limitations, because sometimes we don't have all the information. Um, I like that we definitely have continued attention to, to review the policies, the bylaws, um, of the ARs and the BPs. I think that's all great for number one. Um, number two, um, one thing that I think we need to do with the parents, and it will help us, because we are saying that we don't want to, um, necessarily go in and micromanage a lot of the staff and try to do their job, and that's absolutely true. We cannot objectively evaluate them if we are actually, you know, trying to get into their shoes and do their job and micromanage, I understand that. Part of the problem, though, is how the, the parents understand what our role is, because I think we've all experienced this, where parents call us. I was so mad, I was at work, I was in the middle of a meeting, and a parent sent me this huge text about a, a, a traffic and crossing guard problem, and like went through all the minutia of it, and pictures, and, and a video of how it's impossible to drop your kid off, and I'm like, I said to this parent, I said, you know, I love you to pieces, but I am not involved in the granular day-to-day operations such as traffic. So there really is somehow, we haven't got the message out to parents, um, about what our role is. And, and I think sometimes there's pressure on us, um, to, to kind of micromanage, because we're getting feedback from parents to do so. So a lot, in, in line with us saying that we, we should not, um, it is not what we should do to try to get in and try to overstep um, our curfew and try to reinvent someone's, um, job or, or solve the problem. Uh, the public also needs to know that, um, our job is not related to solving, um, on-the-boots problems, unless they're real emergencies and you ask for our, um, guidance. So I think that that would be really wise, and somewhere like, yeah.
Can I just say, and we, we do have something out there, the five-step plan.
Right.
And then I think, not only does it then apply to what, to the teachers and comments, that most, most of the time it's a complaint about teacher or something like that, I would say for the most part, so weird, but I think telling, putting out something of, who do you ask, or where do you go, before you come to the Board, something along that same line.
Yeah. And, and can I just say that, like, like, I make, we, we have our own, 'cause we, well, we, we follow the same thing, but, but let me just share with you, it's super easy, like, there's times where I make that mistake, where, you know, I've had a principal say, and I actually talked about it at opening day about Sarah, that, you know, look, I jumped in, because I knew this was kind of a, a hostile parent, uh, so I jumped in, and it was too early, and what I did was, Sarah afterwards was like, you know, I, I got this, why did you jump in? And I thought that I was like helping, and I was like, look, I just was, you know, I knew that this could go, you know, badly, and so I jumped in, and I didn't realize that what I did is I made this harder for her now. And, and so, I just want you to know, like, we all do it because we all care, like, that's the only reason why. We get in our, in each other's ways sometimes, because we care, and it's like, and I know Sarah can handle it, but I still haven't forgotten that today, and that's why I told the story again, because it's like, I tried to, like, yes, this, please, the, I don't even know the child, so that, so like, why I jumped in to detract this now, when it really could have been solved quicker?
Right.
It was, be more efficient, and I, so, but what I'm saying is like, it, you know, I get that pressure, because then when they come to me, I'm, I'm always like, if somebody walks in the front door, I'm gonna try to help.
Right.
Um, sorry.
I, I mean, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, that, um, the, the fact that, it is the fact that we care, you're right, so I, I know that, that Jody, you jumped, writing on, on that part of my comments, but I also know you're caring, you're trying to help. I do recognize that, so I don't wanna take that away from anyone. We just, I think, because of our position, we have to care differently, right? That's just, that's just how it is, and it's up sometimes, because you really can't help people the way you wanna help them, but, um, we have to do that. And to Manny, to your point, perhaps what I'll do is, well, I'll go, I didn't do it today at BV, but the other PTA meetings, all the opening PTA meetings, I'll just ask the President if I can speak for a second, and then tell them what you're saying.
Yeah.
So start getting the message out.
Here's an example of something that you probably should not bring, that wouldn't be best served by bringing to a Board member. Here's something that you can bring.
Like, for instance, a good example of when you can bring to a Board member is the creation of Hebrew in the middle school.
Right.
That's our purview, right? So people could start lobbying us for that.
'Cause I would, I would put, oh, sorry.
And we could, and we could talk to them, and we could bring it up with Dustin and Michael, and have these conversations. That's what's, that's what we kind of welcome, those conversations.
But I'll tell you guys, I think that presenting it as we don't wanna hear things is not the right approach,
But we don't welcome. No, I agree.
No, no. No, that's not it.
And I think that Rebecca has her hierarchy, and I think it's better to introduce what you should be doing instead of don't call us.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Judy, I agree, and that's what I would say, it would be all positive.
I agree, I agree. Right, you have.
Usually what you can say is, I, I appreciate your input. Usually what you can say is I, I appreciate your input.
Here's, if you have issues with your, in the classroom with your teacher, you speak to your teacher.
Right. Yes, and then also, because, I'm so sorry, because I feel like we did a really great job of
Go ahead.
increasing the communication directly with the teacher, then if there is a problem going with a site administrator, then if there is continued to be kind of like a pattern of an issue to empowering the site council parents who are actually elected representatives of their site communities. And so I don't, I just worry about the perception of, we were told, don't bother us.
No, no, we wouldn't say it that way, we're just saying, our time is best, we, here's where we're coming from, we're coming from this purview, so.
You know.
Yeah, that's my approach.
Or our hands are tied unless you've gone through this process, so please go through the process.
Uh, right, right. We cannot be efficient in helping you with the cross of that track.
No, we appreciate, we appreciate hearing from you.
That's just, that's just there, but with Manny, some is the efficiency, like, because you wanna keep issues closest to where they are.
I should see, yeah. Mm-hmm.
And so, and it's actually in the teacher's CBA that they need to be contacted first, like that's in there, so you have to start there.
Oh, okay, right.
And if, if you don't get where you want, absolutely, this is the way where that we're trained to do this, and I have a hard time too, because I don't like that, I go to, you know, just like you, I'm at all the events, and when somebody starts telling me about something, I'm like, I jump right in, and it's like, uh, because that's my job to do that, but yet I do, in and out, tell the principal, I'm here if you need me, or if you need Dustin, or you need Laura, but it's like, it, it, they're gonna get, cause emotions are high.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna get better results if they stick to people that know the issue.
Sure, yeah. Are close to the issue, right, I know nothing about the traffic right there.
But.
Mary.
I would just say that, you know, also we're elected officials, and so it is important for us to be accessible and to be able to hear people if they wanna reach out and they wanna ask you something. So, I think that, you know, when people reach out to me, I find that, um, you know, I always re, redirect them to where I think is the best place for them to be, and I think that we do a really great job of communicating, but as we know for all things that we try and communicate, not everybody internalizes what that is, and certainly in the moment of whatever issue that they're facing, they don't, they may not know or remember, or they may be a new parent, so if they reach out, it's really just about listening and redirecting, because I think it's important to also know that you are there and available to listen, it doesn't mean you're fixing problems or you're jumping in, but it is important to be accessible and available to listen when someone reaches out, and then you can reinforce the communication, just like you would if it was about anything else that we're doing with the school. So, we're reinforcing when our policies, procedures, how we operate, all of those things.
I a hundred percent agree, and don't take my comments and things that I don't wanna hear from the public.
Yeah, no, no.
Right.
Please don't, do, don't mistake that, because I don't mind that, I don't want the public to think that they can solve their classroom issues or their school issues with us, because that, that's all I'm saying.
No, I, I wouldn't want that to be the message at all. By going around, I agree.
Right.
I'm not hearing classroom issues, I do think that this is already working for the most part.
Generally. Right. Right, but I do think it's really important that we, we do have a structure and there's a reason for it, and really supporting that structure and, uh, educating our community about how it best works,
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
but also, that also means listening to them and helping them navigate what that is.
Right.
Right. One, one of the things I've always said is, if we are doing our job right, if we really are, which means making sure he's doing his job right, we'll never hear from anybody. People will barely know who we are, because everything, when you're a kid, did you know what the board members were?
No.
No, you didn't, where did you care, the most important person to the school beside your teacher was your principal and your parents, and it stopped there.
Right.
And that's the kind of culture you want in a successful school district. Not, not to minimize what we do, but to minimize the fact that we have to do those things, and, like, I've had conversations with Sarah Kaper, and I've said, you know, I really didn't hear anything out of a lot of Hawthorne parents ever, cause she takes care of her shit of it, she really does. You know, when we have good site administrators, you'll know, like, we knew, and we've discussed this, that at certain sites, and I won't name the sites, there were pro, there were some administration problems that Michael has since addressed, and because more things came to us from those sites than the other sites, so you know when it's worked.
Yeah, and we have to be there to, I, I think it's important for us to be there to capture the patterns.
Right, I think you both saying the same thing, when there is a pattern, it's starting to brew, you start to hear about it, and that it's important to be able to have, you can't be out of touch, and I think that's why
Yeah.
I. Yes. I.
Being present, going to the meetings, going to events, allows you to be in touch and to pick up on, like, what's the general feeling of what's going on in the school districts, cause you don't wanna have a board here that's completely out of touch with
That's right.
what the experience is that's going on in the school sites, it doesn't mean you're in their roles, it's that you're aware and have a sense of what's going on, and I think that's really important. And to Judy's point, when you start to see a pattern starting to come out, to bring that to the board and say, I'm seeing, I'm seeing and hearing something, what's, it's something that you might want to alert.
Right, and I am always all for listening, I would never turn away to someone who is complaining about anything, but I don't want there to be a perception that I unilaterally can solve the problem, because sometimes they think that, and sometimes, like, I can't tell you, uh, uh,
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. Right.
Sure, of course.
Sometimes, like, I can't tell you, uh, uh, Sunday night, so many people, and I'm sure you all got this, were saying, shut, I think you should shut down school, Manny, I said, first of all,
Oh, yeah.
it's not my decision, we work as a board, and if, it is not my call per se, and I, but, you know, so I wanna welcome all sorts of comments, and I, you're right, everyone wants to be, felt, feel hurt,
Mm-hmm, I got those.
and they always shouldn't, I would never turn, um, anyone's feelings or comments away, but for it to be an efficient, um, problem that can be solved, it needs to go to the right person and through the right machinery.
Right, so I think we're all saying the same.
Yeah, cause it, cause in a void, what happens is, and this happens a lot, is because it's, you know, we live, we're, we're small school districts, we're young people, but they, you know, and, and just people, previous boards, like, that wanna help, and it just, if, if parents start circumventing the process and going to a board member to do something, then it'll, it'll get so big that you won't ever be able to stop it, because people think that's where you go, and it's like, that, I mean, you can't stop that, like, if that's.
And it also sets up a division between us and that chosen board member who's receiving the bulk of the complaints, because then, you know, you're sort of representing them in almost like a promise, like, I'm gonna solve the problem, and then the rest of us can't necessarily just solve the problem, nor should we, but then it kind of puts us, you know, at odds with that, with that person who's getting the, the, um.
Yeah, and I'm evaluating, so like, complaints come in, and with like, we have a process, and so
Lion chair. Right.
as Noah just said earlier, it's, like, I, that's part of my evaluation, evaluation process, like, how is a parent being treated, um, did they file a formal complaint? Is there the best, like, that's, like, I then follow that, I work with Matt on that, oh, you know, so, it's like, that, I have to be able to evaluate how they handle those things.
And I would even say, Michael, that you've met with parents outside of your administrators as well, parents have come directly to you without going to their administrators.
Oh. Yeah. Yeah, that's why, that's why I was saying, like, sometimes I don't get it right, but it depends on what the issue is too.
Right, of course.
Cause I'm, I.
Cause the issue could be the administrator.
Cause I don't push things back if it's bigger than, I, you know, it's not like, well, I can't because we're here, it's up, there are some things where I will absolutely one hundred percent jump right in and sorry.
Yeah, there's exceptions.
There are.
I think it's also important, I think, um, you know, we all have in some ways different roles, you have kids in school, you have kids in each of the schools, we don't have kids in school anymore.
Yeah.
So, and we're all involved in many different things out in the community, so you hear things about our schools or what's happening in our schools, either that are, uh, a rumor, that are true or not true or what have you, so I think it is always important for us to be listening and hearing what's going on and staying in touch, and that information, I think, has to come back through, you know, it can come back through our board meetings, or through our, you know, Q and A, putting that on, uh, Q and A when we're doing our agendas and saying, I'm hearing information about this, I wanna forward that on to the board or forward that on to Michael, like, I, I heard a lot of things this week about X, Y and Z, I think you could kind of, it's an email or it can come through on the, um, communication, I'm not sure, maybe it has to go directly to you because of the.
Alright, I'm gonna be mindful of the time, Manny, anything else?
Okay. The other thing is just a much larger, um, conceptual issue that, I just wanna think about, there's something they talk about in board, um, excellence, and they talk about the killer Bs, have you heard about that? The killer Bs, the killer Bs is the phrase they use, and I was just trying to look up what those are exactly, but, um, and I remember our representative of CSBA once mentioned this, there's something called the killer Bs, which is that
What?
I never heard about that.
school boards often, um, fall into the habit of being, of talking about or deliberating about or having study sessions, um, disproportionately about the killer Bs, and let me tell you what they are, there's a whole bunch of words that start with Bs, but buildings, budgets, bonds.
Breggie.
Uh, breggie.
Oh, yeah, 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 and not academics.
Okay, you're, and not academics, absolutely.
Right, but, but, right, so, so we need to show and show evidence, if we really care about academic excellence, then there really should be more time
Yeah.
and labor done with our, in, within our purview, um, in those areas and less of the so-called killer Bs, so what are those, so, just as a start, if we spent more board time including conversations, dialogue, um, agenda planning, study sessions on matters that directly impact the students, um, so we talked about reading strategies, we talked about math instruction, we talked about mental wellness, student fitness, parent education, class size issues, teacher instruction, I mean, those things are all so complex, but if we really spend the amount of time and effort and studying and scrutiny as we do for other things that tend to start with Bs, we might be closer to academic excellence. And it is something that they say a lot of boards, you know, that this happens, is that, um, they eat up a lot of our time, and they're, they're, they're important, I'm not saying that, but if we really like had a full-on, just imagine if we had the luxury of time to really have a study session about, um, you know, the reading instruction, um, that goes on throughout the whole, I mean, what if we spent a month of study sessions about, you know, the reading program? Or about math, or the fact that, you know, um, you know, there's a whole, um, there's a whole dilemma now about saying, okay, is there a certain track of students who maybe, should not be taking, you know, the high-end, um, mega calculus, and then is there another type of path, I mean, there's, there's issues that can be discussed that would really, um, really contribute to academic excellence, so it's just a larger.
So Manny, when I first got on the board, the main issue was Metro, that's all they talked about.
Sure.
And I ju, I would just say, like, during board comments, I would say words like book and academics and education, just because it was at least, it was said once during the meet.
Get us back in it, yeah, right.
But I learned over the years that it's the unsexy part about being a board member is most of those things kind of circumvent, except for like textbook adoptions, strategic plans, larger pictures, kind of evade our purview, because we don't design the curriculum, right, we approve it, but we don't design it. We, that's, that's done from Dustin on down.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And.
It's his purview.
And I agree with you, it, it, it's CSBA, also, when we were trained, they said the same thing about
Right.
a, a district's academic success is directly correlated to how much time a board spends on discussing those issues.
Right. Right.
But unfortunately, you have to take care of the business of being a school district, and that's on us, right, that's on us.
Yeah, and I'm not saying you, you should, yeah.
And then, and, and you have to let the people, let the teachers teach, right, you have to, that's, that's their thing, so we have to find the balance of, where do we come in?
Yes.
So when we ask for things like a study session on performances, we'll do, we'll get updates on, on the new testing, right, the, the eye ready and the NWEA, um, we'll get, we'll get, you know, we'll just discuss scores,
NWE.
Yeah, NWE, yeah.
that is all stuff that we can discuss, and then we find if we want to spend that, we do need, we do need more of that, right, but then
Right. We need more of that.
Yeah.
We've added a lot more of that.
Where do you get it from, right, where do you, where do you get it from, so we have to figure out, we, if we get updates on our, on our kids' performances, if they're being tested twice a year, you're gonna discuss those twice a year, you know, whatever, whatever lines it be.
Yes.
We could dive deep if we wanna have study sessions on APs and go into that, and they have decided to do that, we could do that, because we approve those courses, right, we, we're the ones that approve those courses.
Right, right.
So we can find ways to do what you're saying, it's not easy, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, but we shouldn't just do it just to spend our weeks, we should do it with a purpose. So that's the one thing, the thing about the killer Bs is that we need to vote on budgets, we need to get our buildings built, we need, that, nobody else is gonna do that but us.
And that is our responsibility.
That's our responsibility, so.
And it's also a concrete entity that we can see, and we can readily see the progress, it's much easier to evaluate in some ways than it is to evaluate, like, how the kids are doing, you know, throughout the year academically, there's many, many small steps to that.
Well. What I would say though is that's the purpose of the strategic plan, because we could, we could be spending lots of time talking about education, but it's about prioritizing what that, what that is for the year and what those goals are, and having, you know, really holding accountable what that is, and as we're working through that strategic plan, if there's parts of that that you feel like you need to have, or we feel like we wanna have a peel-off A section to look at, we should. We also wanna be focused about where are we trying to get to from educational excellence in academics?
Right.
And what, and what have we identified as those goals, and then really reinforcing that throughout the year, because we don't wanna throw in a lot of things that are not necessarily what we've identified as the priorities for the year, or we want to get to where academic excellence is, and educational excellence is, is in terms of how we have identified it. So I think it's important at the beginning of the year while we're making these plans, to really identify, like, what do we wanna hone in on and how are we honing in on it, and, and how do you wanna schedule that out? So that it's more, um, purposeful to know, it's more focused about why we're looking for this information. Because otherwise, I do think we, we will use up a lot of staff time that is not going towards what we're really identifying as our goal from an academic standpoint. In terms of the total meeting, it's very hard to say, like, what percentage of the meeting do you spend talking about math versus, uh, construction versus, uh, mental health, and how you wanna break that out? Because it's the subtotal of the meeting, in many ways, you can try and limit that more, but I just think we have to really try and utilize this strategic plan in that way to help us stay focused on the academics and what, and what that looks like through the year.
I think if being a educator was a requirement for a board member, it'd be a different conversation, we have three people who work in schools, who work in schools on this particular board at this moment in time. Um, it's hard for us not to want, not to want to talk about that stuff, but it's not a prerequisite for being on the board, as trustees, we're not the educators, we're the trustees. Sometimes that sucks, sometimes you wanna get more, that's why I'm doing that now, I know, because I wanna get in the classroom.
Yeah, but we are, we are, I think, really on our way, I feel like the last couple of years have been a bit of a tornado, there was reconfiguration, there was MTA, there was COVID, there was, you know, and I would say even, for example, the cell phone policy is an academic intention, at least that's mine.
Well, that impacts it directly, it's their behavior, it's their mood, it's their attention spans, so I want more of those, so it doesn't have to be about the ABCs and one, two, three, but more about things that directly shape their experience as learners.
That's right. Cause.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. Right. And I think we're getting there, we're really getting there, and this is gonna be the year where we're rationalizing.
Right, and as a prerequisite, none of us are supposed to have a degree in anything, in anything, yeah.
You don't have that, anything. I don't have to have a degree.
Right, there's no prerequisite that you need to have a degree in construction or, you know, finances and all those things, it, would it be helpful, yeah, sure, it's for some.
No, the best boards are, you know, people that have kids that are in the district, not in the district.
Diverse.
Right, and, yeah, diversity.
That is, right, that's what makes a healthy board.
Right.
But the fact that, like, I as an educator feel like, wow, there are really holes in my information for, um, the amount of construction knowledge and finances I need to have in order to contribute to this board tells me, in my opinion, I think it is weighted towards construction and finance.
It's a snapshot of time though.
For now, for now at least.
It will end, it will end.
For now, I mean, but we're running a little city, we are running a little city.
But it is a tendency for, for all, yes, for all those cities.
Right. I'm at that point, it's something when I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, the two things that were basically, I'm just saying, when I ran, I didn't need to, the education I had, obviously,
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what it is, yeah.
Right.
But the, I, the construction and the budget were the two major issues that I had to deal with.
Right.
And I really, I was in a different position than you were, and I was able to really spend some time trying to study them as much as I could, so that I feel that I came up to speed, but I agree with you. The, the problem is when we come on, there's so many other things that are not in our purview, that, that, I think that that's a big issue that we need to consider, and I think that taking the, as Judy had just said, something about the MAKE Plan, which can give you a broader perspective of a position on the board, would be helpful for people who can, so I, that I would.
Yeah.
No, for sure.
Right, sure. Cause you have an appreciation from all the areas that are responsible.
The finance, the teachers, you, the finance.
You don't have to know everything there is, you got expertise in that.
It's not, being, it's not a sexy job, they, they say being a board member is the worst elected job in the country.
Appreciation.
Congratulations, man.
It is, that's right, it, it.
But it is very gratifying, I mean, it's complex, and it, it's complex, and in, in many ways, it's very business oriented, in the sense of
It is, it can be. Yeah.
There are board members.
There's a budget or grants, we're looking for grants, we're looking for education grants, we're, we're negotiating with the union, we, you know, there's, there's so many aspects to it
Right.
that are so important from a planning a budget for, you know, we have to, we don't do a one-year budget, we do a three-year budget, like, it, it's much more complex in that way, and we have to plan for that. Every time we hire a teacher, we have to know the impact of that financially for ourselves, every time we add a student in a chair, we have to understand what does that mean, does that mean we end up hiring another teacher, and what's the impact of that on our budget?
Right. Years out.
Right.
It is imperative that we have a full understanding of that, to be successful, to provide the resources we need to make that education happen in the classroom.
So we continue to set the example for our students, we leave, you know, integrity, or just community and vice versa, and that's the best that we can do, and trust that Michael and his staff is gonna carry out our vision for our students' academic success.
Right, and there it is, right there.
That's right, but just be mindful, and you can do this, Manny, when you take this chair, and you can figure out ways to lead, uh, the conversation of education purposely into our meetings. My way of doing it is with now and then, to make sure that, I'm a little bit community, we're exposed to our teachers and our teaching, that was my thought. You can have your own ideas, and, and we welcome all that stuff, and that makes us all great individual leaders, you know, we did a great thing this weekend by keeping schools open, right? We, we kind of worked together, we said, and, and what people, we're the unsung heroes, that people never know, that what we did is the nightmare that would have been trying to program those hours that we missed, there's no room, we either had it canceled or.
Yeah, I was gonna have that.
But I'm just gonna say, that's because of maintenance, operations, destruction.
Yeah, that's right.
No question.
Because of votes we took, leading up to this.
Right.
Yes, that's true, I, and I don't. And I don't, and you don't have a closed school.
This summer, yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's, uh, it's a good thing.
Those, those things undergird our ability to have an academic excellence.
Were there, a lot of people said to me, were you worried all through the weekend? And I said, no, I'm just getting updates and all summer this year. Four years though, I would have been
It's, it's, well, yeah, it's open.
It's, it's not like, every time it rained, it flooded.
Yes, every time, yes, every time.
At times, often it's always flooded, worst time last year.
But, but things were fixed.
I only had one of the five buildings at least. I used to have, last in January with those rains, I had all five buildings.
You had a big year already where you were dealing with this stuff.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
So I, I think that
I think we have covered this stuff, anything else?
So Manny, Manny will
Incorporate.
For sure.
You, you will just summarize everything?
I will.
I will email you my one comment, two comments.
And then And then I'm not, I'm not, this is the first time we've actually done this. Um, and I don't know, Mary, because we did this under your two divisions, we intend to, do we have to approve these normally and openly? Once this is all adopted, we have to do it well.
We did, we did, we did approve these.
So, okay, so, so next meeting, we'll come back with the consolidated version and we'll approve them.
Okay, right.
Will it be a first reading or will it be a public?
No, we'll
Hello, hello?
Okay. Okay, so we'll take these right here. What he says before, thank you, very constructive conversation today, guys. Feels good, feels good about it.
He says, it's
I feel like it's been
That and a row we, so we're
I mean, I think it's working, right?
Stuff is working.
Having the bill, having the relationship, having our hands on it. Um, for the handbooks, I, these are really cool, so we have that.
Scoot them up a little bit.
He was still, he got like the I think he said he was still working with staff on the day. So I think I don't, I'll wait till he gets back. Will?
Yes.
I forgot to email you yesterday, but I want to say
Are we sitting with our backs to you?
So do you want to still, I can send you one right now, right, and you're in the box? Or do you want to just?
What would, either, what would it be?
I, we have to be a team, okay?
Are we sitting with our backs to you?
Do you want your sides to us, your sides?
Mr. Alz.
And then when you present, you're at the podium.
And I'll pop up for one second.
It's a, it's a profile, Sarah, how'd you, how'd you move and go?
Hey, Tim. I'm really well. I'm so fabulous.
That border.
Kelly, you need water?
Yes, do you need water?
Yes.
This evening when, uh, last week, Sarah's still be around?
I don't know, I got long days. Those are important. Those are my mom's special, my mother's. And teachers, there's no way I don't hear it. I don't have a choice. So when you present, you're at the podium, guys. So when you're presenting, you're at the podium and it's going to be projected there and you click through. And then we record it there.
I hope I was okay on the panda. I even had a lady spot where it said Boris' live year.
Yeah, 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 I was me. No, you didn't, yeah, thank you.
I was like, I just want people to know, like
It's going, no, it was perfect, thank you, because then I was like, ah.
Thank you, I was working on Saturday, I was like
No, it was perfect because I opened it up on Saturday, Sunday afternoon, I was like
They were perfect, I know.
Thank you.
I didn't know it was that, I was like, mentally, I'm like, I need to see it.
No, it was perfect because, because I was, I was thinking, I was like, okay, one picture's in the right place. Close, yeah, I was like, close, yes, awesome.
Here, we would like to change this because we don't want to have our backs to the door. Does anyone have any issue with this?
Yeah, we actually
So, so you want to put your backs to the windows?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Sure.
But I don't think they can see you though. Facing this way, oh, hey, you're knocking someone.
This is still weird, like we're literally like this.
Thank you in advance. Yeah, you're looking at the screen.
You're watching the screen or the presentation?
Where are the people are talking behind us?
Okay, so turn it.
Turn, yeah.
Turn it if it makes you feel better.
I wish I could be there seeing you intake the whiskey or something.
How are you? I don't know, sit up, sit up.
You hiding particles outside, I heard something like
I'll try, I'll, how are you doing?
Oh, yeah.
You don't ask. They did not get a dunk tank this year, so you're going to miss out on a team who did.
Whoever says to have forty? I'm okay, I'm okay one day.
Kelly, you want fired?
Oh, my gosh.
I don't know if you like shot adrenaline. Poor Tim. He was so fun.
Why? Do you remember, he's in red today.
Because she's so excited. She's so excited about what's going on.
If you guys are moving to a Chinese device, you're going to stop.
He didn't really need to leave yet.
Whatever you want, I'm over there.
Should we just
You're the energizer buddy.
Drew? Uh, I sent you the draft process thing, you didn't see it? I sent you the draft process, so take a look.
And Ben Hamon caught a June bug and we picked it twice.
I'll go back.
There was a June bug, plus I heard everybody
How, how do we get them in there? I'm going to go back and look at it, but
And they're like jumping up and down.
The one that does the tick like I need a green one.
Everybody's squatting all this, and Aaron just gets out and walks over like that, and then he walks down the block, he lets it go. And he comes back and he does it again. But you mean, maybe he took it out. So take a peek, we don't know if he can see his gathering or question.
Let's sit, let's sit. Can we go, can we, uh, can we get that, that moving around? We're just going to wait till musical chairs is over here.
Check in, you know. Their snake, if they're at Drexford, if they're still at Drexford, then they could tell it's wrong with their name.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Shenanigans.
Hey, Tim, I didn't see you.
Hi, gang.
I'm your side speaker to me after I even talk.
Do you have any snacks? There's no, that was something that happened Saturday night.
So Pam has to get in that closet. Just, just go, when she comes, she's coming.
She got to get her phone. Just wandering her out.
Hi, happy you've joined us.
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, we're all speaking here, so we're all going to be starting soon. Whenever you want to.
All right. Then, thank you all for coming, as if you actually had a choice. We're very excited to be here this app, I don't know why I'm standing, I think my watch is probably to stand. Anyway, we'll get right into it, we're following up with our strategic plan. Board just had a very robust, wonderful study session, board evaluation goals. So a little bit of a, a nice wave we're traveling on, so we'll continue that with you guys. Thank you for all being here. Are you filming, Michael, you're rolling on?
We are rolling.
Oh, we are.
Maybe.
Peter Parker, please. Okay, Michael, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, good afternoon to our board, to our cabinet, to our entire leadership team. Uh, we're very pleased to begin this next communication cycle about academics and the goals that we have for our school district. Uh, as you can tell by these pictures, we're, this is a, a cycle um, that we've been enduring for the last year. Uh, we've tightened up this cycle. Uh, if you remember last, we had a board feedback on our previous strategic plan. And I just want to mention about this process that's been really beneficial for us as a team is this ability to make changes, look at some of the research, look at some of the data and find out why something's working and not working. And so we have taken your feedback and we had our leadership team meeting in July, which was a, a conference for the administration. We spent almost three full days on the strategic plan. Um, and I think that it's getting better each time we have a strategic plan. And it's really malleable based on the feedback that we've received. Um, and we're excited to be able to share this with you tonight. You're going to see some differences. Uh, as you know, I started off with opening day. And with opening day, we had a, a great opportunity to set the framework for data. That we want the data to inform and guide our decision-making in the school district in order to achieve academic excellence. So that framework is set, that's set for our leadership team. I know that principals have already gone back and, you know, with staff, they're asking for things or there's a, you know, a resolution to be found, it's finding the data before making a decision. So what we've done is we've really tightened up our strategic plan. I'm excited to be able to share this with you. You will see in your plan there, on the first page after you turn in, you're going to see that, that we have five core goals here that are by school side. And so while there's different ways to get to each goal by school, we're creating a common framework. Um, and the, the most important thing about a strategic plan is that everybody knows and can share the story. And so by creating these common goals in areas of improvement, we're all headed in the same direction. Arrows are in the same direction. It's going to be easier for us to tell our story as a school district, whether it's at a public meeting like this or you're in a faculty meeting. Um, and everybody's telling the same story. And I'm really excited that, that we, that this occurred over the conference. I think it was kind of an epiphany, epiphany that, that happened. Because I wish the one thing that you could see and, you know, it looks like it's a lot of fun there. But I will tell you, this work is tough, this work's hard, and we challenged each other. And, you know, and we can do that, a healthy team does that. You know, there were red faces, there were, you know, people that couldn't see somebody else's point of view. And ironically, we were kind of just talking about this as a board and superintendent team. And that's super healthy to be able to do that, and we did that. And yet, we were able to put together a product that we're very, very proud to share with you. You're going to see some integrations of the areas with chronic absenteeism and the behavior, which are incredibly important to getting the, to improving our academic outcome is having kids in school and also having kids behave appropriately. So I'm going to start with student services and introduce to you Mrs. Laura Collins Williams.
All right, good afternoon. So I'm starting off because the work that we do in student services and the work that Dustin does in ed services is all embedded in what the sites and the admin, administrative teams at the sites do. So it's not separate, they're connected. Um, but I'm going to kind of lay the foundation because I think, no way you can attest to this when you're building a house, the foundation has to be strong in order to keep building. So I'm going to lay the foundation, but the things that I talk about, you'll hear again as the school site principals and their teams present because, um, because it's before they're all interconnected and embedded together. So I'm going to walk you through. There we go. Going to walk you through the goal areas. So if you notice, the goals here are a little different than the core goals that Dr. Brighi just pointed you to in the beginning of your packets. Um, but they are the same. So just to re, to refresh for academics, um, we're looking at a three percent increase in English, language arts, math, and science across the board. Um, in student services, we're going to support that goal by providing, um, direct instruction, uh, remediation in math and reading comprehension through direct instruction and remedial instruction for students with disabilities. So the things that we have in place that we are going to do, um, we're looking at using, we have several pieces in place, reading mastery, Wilson reading, Lundy Bell, connecting math concepts. Those are all direct instruction programs that train those areas of academics specifically. So helping to increase both students' reading and decod, reading decoding and reading comprehension to help them make gains on our, on our test, on our standardized scores. Um, and then connecting math concepts to help them with their math calculations and their math, um, reasoning. So how are we going to measure that? Because how are we going to know if they made progress? So we're going to have pre and post reading intervention comprehension scores. And we're going to have pre and post math intervention scores. So we're going to, in the next month, take their baseline and find out where they are. And then we will test again around winter break. And we will test again right after spring break to see the growth that is made there. All right, so that's academics for attendance. So this is one of our focus areas this, this year. Overall, as a district, we have approximately seventeen percent absenteeism across the district. But the significant subgroups are students with disabilities, English language learners, and, um, African-American students. So that's on our dashboard. So in the document that you have in front of you, um, and also on the strategic plan document, those two pieces are linked for you if you want to look at our, our dashboard data. Um, but that's kind of the summary. So we have some work to do. Uh, we have a goal of having ninety-five attendants or higher every day and for the whole school year. So what does that look like? We have to clean up what we're doing. So this, uh, this plan that you're looking at is something that we developed along with Dustin and his team and the school site administrators. The five pages here, the attendance procedures and protocols. This is what I would like for you guys to take back and have some time, spend some time with it and look at it. It's, it's in the, it's also, it's in the main packet, but use the one that I gave you that in the, in the packet that I gave you that says student services department, yes. The second, the other one, the gray one, yes, Mrs. Harp, it's that one.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
Just for clarification, we probably should have done the house cleaning on the front end. The slide deck that you guys are going to see is exactly the same format as last year. All the goals are listed inside your packet. So really, this is just a guide for us to tell who's next. You'll see all the check marks are marked in progress because we hope that these goals will be moving forward. And then that way, we'll be able to bring the slide deck back to you multiple times throughout the school year to be able to monitor progress just like we would with a regular report card. Um, and then, um, Ms. Collins Williams, this second packet that she has asked out is a slight insert. Everything else that, uh, will be presented from anybody else in the room is within the small clipped packet. This is the only excerpt, additional add to it. So right now, we're in this packet and then we'll come right back to this packet as well for the rest of the present, uh, rest of the conversation.
Okay, so we're going to take a look at this right now, just to kind of walk you through it. So we're, we're revamping our attendance, prop procedures and protocols, our policies. So we have always, always looked and called and checked in on students who are not in school. But we did not have a systemic way of doing it. You know, maybe it was done one way at the elementary schools, another way at the middle school, another way at the high school. We're standardizing our procedures across the district. So what you're looking at is what we will do as a district, um, going forward. We already have, we've already started some of this, um, but this is our draft to present to you to get your feedback on. So, for example, instead of waiting until kids maybe are absent for a week, we're looking at the first three absences. So, what happens after kids miss three days of school, whether they're consecutive or broken up? Teacher, the classroom teacher's calling home. Hey, where's Laura? She wasn't in school today. Is she sick? Is everything okay? Can we get, can we get you, you know, can we work with you to figure out what's going on? We're trying to keep it from becoming a chronic problem. Because remember, chronic absenteeism is 10% of the school year. So, we're in the, what, seventh day of school? So, two or three days, you're already chronically absent. Okay? So, if you walk through it, I'm not gonna go through every step, but we are intervening after three absences, five absences, eight absences, 10 absences. 10 weeks, figure, you're already at chronic absenteeism. But what we're doing differently this year, we're intervening at the classroom level, at the site level, after five days, there's a letter. In the package that I sent you, there's a sample of each one of these letters. You see, it's in blue, letter one, letter two, and then the SART meeting. The change now is now after the second letter, there's gonna actually be a school attendance review team meeting for the student at the school site. The school site principal or assistant principal, counselor, and whoever, and teacher, they're meeting with the family to say, you're missing a lot of school. How can we assist you? And the student will be placed on an attendance contract. Okay? If that is not successful and they continue to miss school, they will move to the district attendance review board team. And so, that's gonna have a little bit more teeth. That's gonna be Ben Wardrop, the director of student services. We'll have the site principal for the student who is, for the site they attend. We're gonna have someone from BHPD there. We're going to also have one of our parents who is an assistant DA there. And we're going to walk through that and talk about that attendance contract that was not successful and determine, we're gonna have our MFTs there, we're gonna have our school sites there, we're gonna have school counselors, determine if there's any support that the family needs that they're not getting to help the student get to school. We will have a time that we work to provide the interventions, three to six weeks. If they're not successful and they continue to be absent, the most chronic offenders will be referred to the district attorney. So, we've made that connection. And we were told before, right around when we went out for COVID, that that process was kind of defunct and not in place. But I confirmed this morning that it is in place and there's still people on staff. And I'm making those connections now.
Laura, does DCSF step in at any point, chronic absenteeism?
It could, they could. It depends on what the reasons are. And it depends on, you know, the involvement of the parent and if they're responsive to the support of the school. But yes, they could be part of the team as well. Or it could be a referral if it is neglect or if the parent is the hindrance of the student getting to school. Let me see. So, the other part of this, one of the other blue links that you see here, and everything is linked, you can look at it later on your computer. We have to figure out also our data, clean up our data. How are we entering these codes in ARES? We had five different codes for absences. Absent 30 minutes, which is a tardy. Tardy 30 minutes or less, tardy 31 minutes or more. Absent illness, absent excuse, absent unexcused. We're cleaning all that up. So, we're working on that. But it's a conversation. It's not something that you can do in, by yourself. We've been talking with school site administrators. We've been talking with the office managers. We've been talking with the people at the sites who do attendance. So, if you click that link later on, you'll see an actual chart with about 20 codes. We are proposing that these be our only codes. They're based in ed code. The ed code is there for you to reference to see why this code is acceptable. Because there are things that have gone into place recently, like students are allowed one mental health day per year, per ed code. But how are we gonna code that? So, those are the conversations that we're having. So, that's there for you to take a look at as well. The final process will be, we have another meeting scheduled. My department has another meeting scheduled with the office managers and attendance clerks to finalize those particular codes. But the key piece is looking at the data. If you look at the second and third page, pages actually two, three, and four, you'll see some key dates. So, there are things that we're doing weekly. Then a couple of times per quarter. So, weekly, we're gonna be looking at the kids who are absent. We actually did this yesterday. Ben Wardrop sent out an email to the school site principals and school site admin team. Hey, guys, here are your people who are, who have missed all the days of school. Here are people who have missed three days of school. Here are people who missed two days of school. Where are we in finding out where these people are? We are also dropping the kids who are actually no shows by Friday, but not without, not without contact. It's not, it's just not, we're not just taking you didn't show up. We need to know, where are you? Like, literally, as I was coming in, someone called the office and said, someone's been calling my house and we said we're not coming. Okay, great. What's your name? Go online, fill out the exit form, we'll stop calling you. But we're making sure that we're tracking everybody and keeping these processes in place. So, just a lot more intervention, a lot touching it more frequently. And then also, these are the dates that these different letters will be sent out. And then we also have our, we call it DART instead of SART, our district attendance review team. And that will happen three times a year. Yes?
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yes.
First of all, thank you so much for this. It sounds right. It sounds right. It sounds good and it sounds so thorough. Thank you. What happens if somebody gets into, you know, we have like, we had a student who tore his ACL and then was out for a month or something like that? So, can they also fall under this purview so that they're getting the same level of support, even if it's quote-unquote an excused absence?
Yes, wonderful question. And I wish this was live so we could go into it. There are other pieces linked to this. There are five other documents linked to this document. One of them is our home hospital instruction document. So, a student that has an injury like that, like they are too, either ill or injured to come to school.
Yes.
We can place them on home hospital. We have codes now for that. We have to clean those up because we need to, there's one version if you completed it, there's one version if you didn't complete it. But they get the support of a teacher, minimum of five hours a week. So, we put them on there and then we track the attendance and we track the work completion.
Sounds amazing. I try not to give particular examples about my own kids.
Right.
But I did have a student who was out for almost a month with a concussion last year. And I got a lot of support and the responsiveness was there.
Right.
But it was overwhelming after one month of being gone to try to catch my student up. And so, something like this is something that, you know, the partnership.
They couldn't receive that support, yes, yes.
Not to say that there was not the responsiveness.
Right.
But this would be even better. So, thank you.
And those, that information for parents will be forward-facing on our website. And they'll be able to find it and click to start the process.
Then, my impression is, you know, when you have an elementary schooler, they've got the same teacher every day.
Yes.
That teacher knows if your student is not there on day one.
Yep.
And then day two.
Yep.
You typically really hear about it. But at the middle school and high school level, which teacher initiates a phone call? Every teacher, all six teachers? You know, how does that go?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. And that would be, I say the more the merrier, actually.
We're not gonna limit anybody, but we, that's a good question to ask. And maybe, Kelly, if you don't, if you're okay with it, we could maybe say the advisory teacher? Because they have them.
They only see him once a week.
They only have, okay, so maybe English or math? We can figure that out.
Yeah.
We can figure it out.
I would just, maybe, right.
The counselor, because they.
Is the point person, perhaps?
They run the, they run the attendance and, okay, there we go. Counselors can do it.
Because to me, like, elementary, it's straight shot, but middle school, high school.
And same with high school. And same with high school. So, we'll have to figure that out, you know, too far. Well, and yeah, thank you for that, Mark. We've been doing what we call warm body counts. So, literally, bottoms and seats for this last week and this week.
Thank you.
To actually figure out who's registered versus who's actually showing up. And I'm happy to say, we've been at 95% or higher every day this week, including yesterday.
Great, great. And then you mentioned the three groups that you're finding that the chronic absenteeism is the highest.
Exactly, yes.
Do you, in your conversations, your team's conversations with those families, have you been able to decipher any consistent reason or any patterns that you're seeing?
Not yet, because we're just starting in with this process.
That's what this will do.
Yes, I think as we work through the SART process, when we have the meetings at the school site with the parents and the students, I think some of those reasons will come out and we can figure out what support they need.
Okay. And then, I'm seeing a lot of by May 2024, but based on what you and Dustin are telling me, this has hit the ground running immediately and fully implemented by May 2024.
Correct. This is, we fine-tuned it. We used it for, we piloted it for a year. We know where we need to tweak it and what was working well. But we're also gathering, in the process, we're gathering our data. This was necessary to make sure that we had the foundation right so we could gather the data so we could have the right information.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you have due dates for when you're going to finalize the hopes? And also, like, the example, like, who's gonna report? I think you have a date in mind of when you wanna have all that in place.
So, the way that we kind of talked through the process was that today, we would present you with the preliminary information. You would take it back for a couple of weeks and look at it, give us any input. We have a leadership meeting the first week of September. For me, this and the behavior piece that I'm gonna speak to you about, we will finalize at that time and roll it out.
Great.
But we've been, we've been doing this work since July in preparation. Okay, that's all, that's what we have for attendance. Moving forward, looking at behavior. So, the goal is to increase the way, the fidelity of our data and to determine classroom managed behaviors and office managed behaviors in all areas of campus. So, we have a draft version of something like this for behavior as well, but it's not ready because we haven't had the chance to meet with the leadership team and talk about the information from the behavior advisory panel yet. But we have the recommendations. And I've been slowly kind of taking those off and trying to make sure things are in there so that when we have our meeting on the sites, we have a draft document to look at and to present back to you. So, that's one of the things. We'll have, we'll have a guide like this. And actually, let me back up one moment. These attendance procedures are actually part of a whole handbook. This is just the procedures. There's more that goes with it, but I really wanted to just focus in on this for you today. But when it's ready, you'll see the full version. The same thing goes for the behavior. You see there, have a behavior and discipline handbook, same thing. So, what happens when a kid is on their cell phone? What does the teacher do? Do they go to the office? If they go to the office, what does the office do? If they go to the site administrator, what does the site administrator do? Examples, but not if, then, then that. Remember, I said real specific that we can't have charts like that, but we have a kind of a matrix, a flow chart of what happens. We're gonna talk about, and Dr. Scott will talk a little bit about this in her presentation. We're gonna talk about, we're gonna combine our PBIS and our discipline, because they go together. But we're also gonna talk about the differences. What PBIS is and isn't, and what discipline is and isn't. Our data entry, if you see the second part, it says VHUSD ARES Data Entry Procedures. We spent three hours? I think they retired me a little bit. But at the, at our leadership conference, we, each team sat with me, my team and I, and we went through, there's a document that has specific instructions on where to put what in ARES as it relates to behavior. The purpose of that is so that we can run reports and get information about specific data, behaviors, trends, and what behaviors we're having on each campus. So, everyone has it. Everyone's following it. It's our bible and it will allow us to then make decisions based on our data, make informed decisions. And data will drive our decisions. There's something I was trying to say about that. This is gonna be a big one, because we're working with elementary, we're working with secondary. How do we find the middle ground to make it where it's relevant to both sides? School site principals will talk a lot about that. PBIS, like I said, we're gonna make them together. But for my department's purpose, we're going to support the sites in implementing their PBIS action plans and their SEL plans. They have them. They've been going. We're working on tweaking the tracking of them. But last year, the sites did a really good job in making sure that every week, there were weekly lessons on SEL. And we had a tracker that showed that, so we'll be able to share that data with you as well. And as well, and what we're doing with our PBIS tier two, either year one or year two, depending on the site. Forgot what I was gonna say. Okay, but I'm gonna talk fast, because I've been up here and we got a lot more people to talk. The last thing is the community engagement. So, I sat and I thought, and I was like, okay, I know sites are doing parent universities. They're doing, they're having events, reaching out. What can my department do to support that? That would be something that's in a meaningful way. What we, what we've needed and what I haven't been able to put in place yet, but we're there now, is an alternative dispute resolution system. So, if you will go to the last page in your document, basically, trying to avoid, trying to resolve disputes at the lowest level. Trying to avoid due process and litigation. So, what this is, is you have informal resolution sessions. You have facilitated IP's. You offer training to parents. And you can have post, pre and post filing mediation. So, you have an IP meeting or 504 meeting at a school site, parent disagrees. Instead of them going out and getting an attorney, they will be able to scan this or go to this, or this place on our website, with a QR code or this vhusd.org/ard, ADR, and get this form. And they can request one of these meetings. So, they can come and talk to me and say, hey, we had an IP. I disagree with what the team recommended. Can we have a discussion outside the context of the IP to maybe come to an agreement? No attorneys, no fees. Maybe there's something we can do. Maybe, you know, a lot of times, it's disputes like, you offer two times a week speech. I want four. Okay? Maybe we can meet in the middle. Maybe we can give four. Maybe, maybe we can agree on three. Or maybe we can come to an agreement of two after we have some additional discussion. But the goal is to help avoid some of the cases going to due process or to litigation to have a conversation in-house. So, we also have a neutral facilitator that we're able to access through Selva, through our ADR grant. So, you know, they don't talk to me because I work for the district. That's, that's okay. We can have someone impartial come in. They meet with the family separately. They meet with us separately. And then we meet together. And they help facilitate that conversation.
How will they know that this is available to them before they pull the trigger and call an attorney?
Great question.
Perhaps an attorney is riling them up, you know?
So, these are gonna be printed as posters and hung in all the sites where we hold IP meetings. This will also be posted on our website. I'm gonna also do a blast and parent search to our parents to let them know this is available.
Can't you also attach it to the IP packets that parents are given?
Yeah, the safeguards and rights, the procedural rights.
We can pass that at the IP meeting, yeah.
Because we're required to hand out certain papers.
The safeguards.
The procedural safeguards, yeah.
Well, I noticed that you used the IP in here, but don't you find that this might be across the district where you might have need for this type of thing also? Is it possible?
So, it's a facilitated IP. That's different. That's where someone, a neutral party facilitates the IP. It's almost like interest-based bargaining for an IP. So, you have someone come in and say, parents, what are you looking for? District, what are you looking for? I'm gonna put them up on the board and I'm gonna walk you through and then we can see if we can make some agreements. It's a different process. So, it's kind of, the regular IP process is here. Then you would have a facilitated IP. If you can't come to an agreement here, then you can have an informal resolution session. These are all steps that you can put in place before you get to a filing.
This is out of the special ed department, but basically.
It's not, yeah. This part is student services. Yes. So, that's my goal to help that. Like, I can think of at least a case, one case at every site last year that this could help. And I have done that also with other families, just kind of more informally here, hit or miss. But trying to make it a formalized, system-wide process and make it available and make everyone aware that it exists to try to meet the goal of reducing special education litigation fees.
I like that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
It works.
Yeah, thank you. Sounds great.
Thank you.
It's really easy to.
We'll have a lot more to share later, babe. Thank you. Alright, and I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Stewart.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Collins-Williams. I can't, absolutely. Thank you for having us again. And I'm here to present the 2023-24 Goals for Beverly Hills High School, our Goals of Excellence. And so, I think you have them in front of you. So, I'll just kind of go through quickly. our Goals of Excellence. And so, I think you have them in front of you, so I'll just kind of go through quickly and then may elaborate on a few points as we go through. So, as Dr. Brady mentioned, and as Ms. Collins Williams mentioned, all of our goal areas are gonna be the same for the different schools. So, for our first one being academics, our goal at both the high school and the other school sites is gonna be to raise proficiency by 3% in English, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. And where is that gonna be measured? In a lot of different places, but predominantly in CASP. So, action step one for the high school will be to increase the number of students scoring and met or exceeded standards on CASP math and ELA and CASP testing by 3%. How are we gonna do that? One of the first things we're gonna do is we are going to look at our data and figure out which kids are the ones that are needing the most support. And that can mean a lot of different things. Who is sort of performing the lowest? Who is the closest to meeting standards but is currently at not met? There are lots of different ways that we can do that. But, so we're gonna provide targeted support for subgroups not meeting standards in one or more of the tested areas to increase students meeting or exceeding that number on CASP. And the kids in the subgroup that we're talking about is for English, Math, and Science, our students with disabilities, our EL learners and African-American population, and in math in particular, also for African-Americans. So, we are gonna log and track these supports for these subgroups in particular, in addition to some of the other things that we're gonna talk about. We're gonna use our eighth grade CASP data to identify students who nearly met standards so the teachers can provide them with targeted instructional support. We're gonna use NWEA data, and we just kicked off yesterday in English classes. I went around and visited classrooms today. We were a little bit nervous that internet devices coming out of summer wasn't gonna be working, but our tech team was amazing, our I-4 coaches were amazing, and quite frankly, I, I don't know that there wasn't, there was no kids that weren't able to complete tests. So, went around and we were able to start that with English, like I said, yesterday and today. We're really excited to have those data chats on the 12th of September so that we can begin to identify these kids right now, where they're at, what their present levels, and teachers can target, families can have conversations about how to move students to the next level in their capacity for all three of those areas. And then we're gonna continue our comprehensive Crush the CASP or similar campaign to figure out how to motivate our kids, to motivate them for tests that for the, a lot of them we talked about before, they feel like aren't particularly important to them personally.
Can I jump in? I apologize. One of the cool things too is with NWEA, there's also a parent component, piece which there is a parent engagement, a community engagement, parent engagement goal. However, one of the things that we will do is be able to communicate out to our sixth, 12th parents exactly where they are at, at the present level. So, especially like those ninth and 10th grade students that have never had these types of assessments before. So, it's very clear and honest to the parents of where they're standing at, at present time. Like whether there's a summer slump, some people can say that that doesn't affect kids or it does affect kids. But now we'll actually have, this is where we're at, and then how do you become a thought partner with us in those interventions and supports? So, it'll be really good. It's a really clean, crisp communication provided by NWEA.
It was interesting to see the kids, in talking with them, going around today and yesterday, for them to hear like, oh, you just wanna know what I know. It's not for grade, it's not for X, Y, or Z. Like you, you guys are just like curious to know what our levels are. And I, you know, cuz they don't necessarily always get that. So, it was nice and I think hopefully, um, we're gonna see some good data coming out of this and the kids taking it serious. So, action step one B, we are going to help to increase the number of students passing two or more AP exams by 2%. How are we gonna do that? We're gonna find our baseline data this year for how many students passed over the last few years with the number of students passing two or more exams with the three, not just a single student, but excuse me, not just a single test, but students that are passing two or more. We're gonna open more access to AP classes and including using following tools like the AP Potential College Board Report. That's a tool that we can use that will identify students based on their PSAT and SAT data to try to encourage them and coach them into taking AP courses in the future if they aren't now because they're good test takers or they show a particular proclivity for something. And it can help us with conversations, getting more kids into taking AP courses. Revising prerequisites, trying to make sure that we're not putting up barriers to kids taking AP classes. And the norming student needs and expectations through Virtual AP Informational Night and Welcome Night AP Panel Discussions. We're also gonna look at our AP attrition rates with teachers to recognize patterns and try to create strategies to make sure that we don't have kids sort of getting cycled off at a certain point and not reaching an AP course. You guys, I think, have probably been getting some emails from parents confused about some of our world language pathways and why there's honors or why there's not. But part of that is us looking at how that pathway looks and why do we have 500 kids starting in Spanish, and this is not the case this year, but in years past. Why do we have 500 kids starting in Spanish and at the end of it, we have nine kids in an AP class? What are we, what is happening with our sequence that is preventing more students from accessing their class? So, looking at that data and trying to figure out how we can increase the number of students in those classes. And then create tools to ensure students that are enrolled in the AP class also sit for the exam. That could be, hey, you should really take this test. I know you don't feel confident today, but you'll be good. It can be making sure that if they need free, free or reduced cost for the AP exam, we provide that. Again, motivating and incentivizing students to actually take the test up their class. Action step one C, creating a system of monitoring and support that increases the number of students earning grades this year higher. Counseling team's gonna work with Ares data personnel to pull DNF rates monthly. So, we're gonna have monthly DNF chat with our counselors to begin identifying at-risk students for intervention immediately. And we'll look at what some of those interventions are. Some are already in place, some are beginning this year. Counselors in eminent will work with our grade level teachers and to meet and discuss these kids who are at risk of DNF and identify appropriate supports and interventions. What are some of those things? It could be as simple as phone calls home. It could be parent meetings, utilizing our office hours that we have. We have tutoring referrals, book on campus during the school day, potentially air tutors. We're also gonna, we, we have created study hall sections this year so that if we identify students that are struggling early on, rather than learning lab, which later on we utilize to remediate courses that are already failed, study hall, we can put them in and try to give them that extra support with the teacher, collaborating with their actual teachers to try to make sure that we try to catch them all we can this year before they fail. And then also, we're emphasizing data collection as a baseline to monitoring all these interventions so that we actually can look at the end of the year, these are all the things that we tried. We saw bank for about here, we should increase emphasis there, et cetera.
Drew?
Yes, sir.
What was the evidence for using C or higher as opposed to B or higher?
Be, create a system, uh, C because, well, for a variety of reasons. B, yes, we could look at that. C is A through G. So, when we look at our dashboard data and we talk about, we have A through G as graduation requirement at Beverly Hills High School, and we have 95-plus percent graduation rate. Why is our A through G qualifier much lower than our graduation rate given it's a graduation requirement? It's because we had kids in there getting sort of that old adage of D for degree. So, what we want is we want to at least ensure that our kids are UCL eligible. But I agree.
But I, I may jump in though. It's also resources. This is a total honest conversation. It's like, if you go, if you go B below, I'm gonna say this, I mean, that's a whole nother pot of students where they have a more significant decrease by the time like quarter ends or the semester ends, right? But when they're borderline in that C area or below, it could go either way. They could end up with a D in a matter of days, or they could end up, you know, maintaining a C level. And when having limited resources, and I'm gonna say that as having, we can only pull so many kids with so much time. Our primary focus would be this year would be, you know, making sure we have no Ds enough. That's a major Achilles heel for our A through G completers. That's first and foremost. Let's, let's get there. That's my professional opinion. And then start monitoring higher, I think, once we perfect the system, if that makes sense.
It, it, it does.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I absolutely hear what you're saying, Dustin. I think as we sit there and harp on educational excellence and you say, well, C is where A through G falls, to me, that always seems, that's like the accepted norm. We'll never get to excellence if we work at the norm. And I know what you're saying, but I would advocate at least for this, that we keep a close eye on some C students because C students are very close to being D students.
Hundred percent, yeah.
And we could build a stronger foundation, there's that word again, Laura, of, of AB students graduating if we treat Cs like Ds. I know we don't have the resources right now, or you're saying we don't. But I would like to dip our toe in that water sooner than later and see what it would be like if we were to open it up to that. What kind of resources would we need to do that? And that comes back to us then, to see, hey, board, we need resources. We, we appreciate your vision of educational excellence, but in order to get there, we're gonna need this. At least come and ask us that. Before we say it can't be done, I'd like to have been asked and say, you know what? We don't have the resources for that.
And that's what we hope that January would be, Noah, is that's what we hope too as we're getting into this structure. We wanna be able to live in that space for, you know, a quarter. I mean, pulling, pulling Ds enough as frequently and often as we're hoping to be able to do, being able to get a group together, professionals to be able to actually analyze the purpose behind it and not letting them go a full quarter or going a full semester and then say, how did so many kids get Ds? You know?
Cuz right now, we would be looking at probably last year's graduates for an indication. And we know a lot of times freshmen struggle out of the gate. I mean, we could be looking at as many as 100, 150 kids on the DNF list per grade at any given time. If we expanded that to C, I mean, we could be looking at intervention for most of the grade levels. So.
Well, A through G is passing. Uh, the C, a C is passing for A through G requirements. Is that correct? So, if we're looking at just making sure we maximize the number of kids that go to four-year colleges, then that metric, even though it's a low bar, it suffices.
It does meet A through G requirements. It's, it's really, I'm just throwing out data. I mean, it's really our, our Ds, you know, that is, again, that nearly met. Like if you look at their CASP and then you look at their grades, it's like those D bands. Unfortunately, and we are still attacking these F students, but there aren't as many F students out there. They're not really, you know, bombing. It's, they're, they could be coasting for different reasons or they could be academically struggling in place too high or too low and they're bored. So, that's what we're really trying to unpack to be able to bring back.
Maybe we can have a metric that says, you know, if it's, if a student is mixed and is getting ABs and Cs, we're not keeping an eye on this. But if a student is getting all Cs, I think maybe we should consider, that student needs help.
Yeah.
Okay? So, if there's something we can do to change it a little bit, to just capture that extra little group and if, if it's not overwhelming, and like I said, if there's more resources that are in question, come back to us. But I would like to see those students that, a C student across the board is struggling.
Or a 75 and lower.
Whatever, whatever metric you guys wanna use. I know occasionally a kid gets a C, it happens. But if they're getting As and Bs and they get a C, that's not a C student. But if a student's getting a C, getting like one B and all Cs, I, maybe we gotta look into this. Maybe that B was a lucky shot, maybe that B is in an extracurricular, we don't know. But at least in the cores, we, we really should be going after that because like I said, I'm out of it. This is time. I, I mean, and I'm running out of it here, but I really wanna get to that. I really do. So, if it's a matter of just saying, hey, you know what? We looked at this, this is doable. Can we have this? Let us say that. Let us say yes or no to that.
I agree. And I, I, what I will say is that I think hopefully we are able to push a lot of kids because of the work that we're gonna be doing with the DNFs. Like, we've had a lot of safeguards in place for kids that are in the F range so that we get them to graduate, right? And now we're saying, that's not good enough because we have this whole pot of kids that are receiving Ds, which is not making them UCL eligible. So, that's next, and I think we'll just continue that.
Question?
All right, sorry. In, in, Dr. Brady, did you go first?
We're gonna do that.
Okay, sorry.
Um, in your experience, when you, when you intervene with the D students, do they end up as C students or B students?
It's a very good question. I mean, I, I don't know that there's a one-size-fits-all answer to that. Um, I would.
And, and I, I acknowledge it's, you know, something that is a very custom question.
Yeah.
I just would really be interested to know, like, that would be something I'd be interested to know. When we intervene with our D students, if they just don't, if they don't just jump up one grade, but maybe two grades, I would be interested to track that, the result.
That's a good question, and I think it's a, it's a question of like the longitudinal support too. It's, is it super-targeted intervention with that kid for a quarter? And then, then they figure out how to get to a C and then they coast, or is it a conversation that continues with the teacher, their counselor, their family, and it's kind of this concerted?
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, uh, the last thing is we are going to create a system to monitor students on campus to ensure maximizing their learning time. Uh, this is the use of Smart Pass. One of the things, and this will help us, like we think, both academically and with attendance. Our kids are on campus, but are they in class? Are they hiding in restroom or doing something else in restroom? Or are they actually in class where they're supposed to be receiving instruction? That's our goal, that is one of our goals, and you'll see it reappear again. But we wanna make sure that when our kids are on campus, they're in class, receiving instruction and delivering. So, that segues into goal two, which is attendance. By May of 2024, the school attendance rate will reach 95% or higher. We're gonna follow the district attendance policies. There's awesome student services, all these new policies that we have coming. We are so excited to sink our teeth into that cuz we think it's gonna really provide an comprehensive way for us to attack some of these attendance issues with our kids. We're gonna collect and utilize multiple data points to inform procedures and interventions, including California School Dashboard and Ares, Ares Data Entry and Reports. And I'll kind of explain a little bit what that means. We're gonna train staff in the use and implementation of a tiered intervention menu, which part of that will come from student services, part of that will be things that we're working on on our campus, emphasizing communication between staff and families. So, back to the question about at high school, which, who's calling home? I am, I, I know parents don't necessarily love to get multiple phone calls is, you know, especially when they're getting like daily and period-by-period calls from the attendance office. But I am of the opinion that if the kid is not coming to school and we don't know why, more calls the better. So, we're gonna encourage our staff, as many teachers as possible, to call home and say, we miss Honey. Why is he not here today? Why has he not been here this last week? We want him back in school. And we think that that, the families and the student, knowing that our teachers, in addition to the attendance office, in addition to the counselor and us care, we're hoping that that'll help them get back. And then work as a staff to utilize software tools to pull and monitor data. Again, that's back to the Smart Pass piece. So, using Ares, using Smart Pass and working with our teachers on both of the, the collection and form calls home, we think will help with attendance. Goal three, school-wide behavior expectations. By May of 2024, all students will be able to identify the school behavior expectations and demonstrate skills on campus. And in the community additionally, sites will increase fidelity with data collection of classroom managed behaviors versus office managed behaviors in all areas of campus. How are we gonna do that? Action step three A, we're gonna increase education and training for staff and students around the identif, uh, excuse me, around identifying and understanding. Let's type while I fix that. BHHS, Behavior Expectations, Monitoring and Documenting Behaviors and Interventions and the PBIS framework. So, we're gonna sc, uh, schedule staff training and use of tiered intervention. These are the things that you can use in your classroom that will help you with students that are struggling with behavior expectations. So, we're gonna be working with our staff on that, both as a whole staff, but also targeted with staff that may be struggling more because either they're newer to the profession potentially, or they have a tougher group of kids based on just sort of either luck or subject and things like that. We're gonna provide that full group and individualized training around inputting discipline data into the appropriate place in Ares. So, as Ms. Collins Williams was talking about, making sure that our teachers are monitoring and putting in the data in Ares so that we can have a comprehensive conversation. By the time it gets to one of my assistant principals or the counselor or myself and we're calling home, hey, we can see that these all things happen in these different classes and the teachers talked about it. We're gonna increase school discipline data reporting to staff as well as other avenues for teacher and administrative dialogue around individual and macro discipline conversation. I think a lot of times, um, there's misperceptions of like what PBIS is. I've heard many times. Well, PBIS means we don't punish kids anymore. First of all, I don't love the word punished. But PBIS means that there aren't negative consequences. That's simply not true. We just don't advertise them. We're not necessarily putting out tons of data on like, this is sort of our, our, the hit list of all the kids that we've punished this month. So, instead, what we do wanna do though is just share the numbers with people. This is the number of office referrals, this is the number of suspensions, the number of kids suspended and the number of days suspended, but these types of things so that we can begin to have that conversation as a staff and, and realize, oh, I'm having trouble with that kid too in class. This is what I've been seeing. And then maybe a lot of times, once these conversations are not happening in isolation, we realize that, you know, they're a C or B kid, and so they're doing okay academically, but something really is wrong and they're acting out so that we can have those conversations and try to help that student. And then we're gonna continue our implementation of PBIS and survey all of our stakeholders to monitor growth.
And Drew, can I just jump in on the back end of that?
Absolutely.
As I was saying, looking at kind of the, the combining of PBIS and discipline as, as part of our. Um, as I was saying, looking at kind of the, the combining of PBIS and discipline as, as part of our progressive discipline, um, uh, intervention. So we start here, but we continue moving through so that we're not just in the, stuck in the positive, or I won't say the positive part, but the part where people feel like there aren't any teeth to it. But we try to intervene, we try to reteach, we try to re- restructure what's happening. But if that's, you're not responding to that, then we continue to move through the progressive disciplines, um, continual, that's the word.
Yeah. Um, and I apologize, I'm probably going long, but I'll try to go through this quickly, but also so that I'm not leaving anything out. Um, action step three B, we're gonna increase, uh, increase student learning engagement by lowering the suspension rate by three percent. So our kids will perform better academically if they're on campus. We wanna lower our suspension rate both for our dashboard, yes, that's a, that's a big market for the school. But more importantly, because we want our kids in school, we want them here, we want them learning, we want them not sort of being punished for something that's happening. So, um, we're gonna collect new data to inform our alternate forms of correction. Um, we're, we're really beginning to look at some of our, um, these alternative means that we can utilize before we get to something like a suspension. Um, which is, you know, one thing that we've used over the last few years is, um, healthy futures. So a kid gets popped for having a nicotine vape on campus for one time, they get, um, what's that? Popped, yes. Uh, they get, uh, healthy futures, um, and some, and some counseling with Normanade rather than an immediate suspension for tobacco. Um, and so get that kid help, get that kid support, keep them in school, the goal, you know, and so we'll continue to try to increase our alternatives to those things. Um, facilitate the creation of teacher, um, facilitate the creation of teacher classroom management plans. Help teachers if they're struggling with managing their classroom. Like, we'll come in as an administrative team and help them come up with strategies, um, have our coaches help them as well to try to work on that. Um, and I'll just give an anecdote real quick. One of our newer teachers, I visited today, and I walked in and the bell rang and heard them say, alright, that means cell phones are gone. And within five seconds, all the cell phones were gone and the kids were, and these were, these, this is a squirrely bunch, I'll tell you that. I looked in, I was like, how did we let all these kids get together? Um, and she had them sort of dialed. So, um, you know, I, I would say in that, my point being, even with our toughest kids, if we provide teachers with the tools, um, they can manage their classrooms really well. So that's gonna be a point of emphasis this year. Utilizing our SRO for intervention coaching and as a community asset, um, so that our students see a partnership with PHPD, have that person be visible. Um, and help us in, in some coach conversations with kids. And redesigning and improving the SST process to involve all groups, admin, counseling, school site, parents, teachers, coaches, et cetera, in supporting student behavior groups. So truly having a student study team to come together, including some of the people that are most important for kids on campus. We might have an athlete that is struggling with behavior and struggling with teachers, and you watch them with a coach, and it's a different relationship. And having that coach as part of the conversation might be helpful. So really trying to bring in as many supports as possible for these students. Goal four, social emotional learning. By May of twenty twenty-four, all students will learn how to foster healthy relationships and clear communications with other individuals and groups. We are going to measure our growth in this area by comparing our end-of-data and PVI survey this year with previous surveys. We're gonna develop and promote, continue to develop and promote SEL strategies and activities through our PBIS program. Our Normanade is gonna continue to be awesome. Um, and those adult staff and student volunteers will create and promote videos and programs and activities to promote social and emotional and physical health. Um, this includes our SOS program, which we have coming up in about a week or two. Measure student learning and attendance in the Lunch Reflections Program. This is a, our, our fun and positive, uh, words for lunch detention, where kids get an opportunity to come and reflect on low-level behavior problems that they may have been exhibiting. Measure the impact of Lunch Connection Program through data around clean campus and lunchtime behaviors. This is where we have teachers and other staff that are walking around at lunch, talking to kids. It's been amazing, we've had more teachers doing that this year than we've ever had. And our third floor patio is cleaner than it's ever been. Our kids are, seriously, our kids are engaged, they're happy to see people, it's been good vibes for the most part, outside of the small freshman Friday situation last week. Um, lunch has been, much, much has been much improved, um, but we're working through that. So, and then, uh, implement the Tier Two Year One Elements of the PBIS Framework for, uh, the tiered fidelity inventory. And then create an action plan for full implementation of the year-long Link Crew Course. That was the goal for this year. We wanted to start a Link Crew Class, um, to have student mentors on campus that could help students all year long. We think it wasn't advertised properly, um, because we ended up having a large exodus of kids as we started this school year. Um, we have the right adults in place for this program. We're just going to work on a year, all year, on creating and understanding what this course is gonna be. And I think that this will be a very big get for us next year. And our last one, community engagement. By May of twenty twenty-four, there will be an increase in community engagement, communication and family connection. Action step five A, we're gonna foster community trust in the school through effective communication. Uh, we're gonna develop and implement a school site communication plan to include strategies for strengthening our partnerships with parents and teachers. Um, we're seeing that already with our new Beverly Buzz, with our Instagram, certain Instagram moments notwithstanding. Um, site communication, admin will meet, uh, monthly to plan and collaborate. Um, we've already seen a, amazing collaboration with, uh, Ms. Starkins and Ms. Deckertra. We're kinda off and running this year, um, our news, newsletter publication schedule. Um, we're gonna collect data to measure how much community is coming to our events after school. Um, and we're also going to collaborate with PTSA. This is an oversight I'm gonna fix and add VHF here to this last four point. Uh, I was moving too quickly, to increase membership totals for the annual fund for PTSA and also VHF donation. And then action step five B, strengthen the parent-school relationship by creating opportunities for informal and positive engagement between families, students, staff, and administrators. We're gonna collaborate, this is one thing we wanna do this year, celebrate. Um, celebrate and appreciate our students and our staff and our families. So we're gonna collaborate with student groups to create a monthly series of celebration events. We're gonna meet with PTSA to plan and expand the masterclass by two additional classes this year, bringing in our parents to learn from our teachers and, and foster strong relationships there. Um, and then create a recognition program outside of PBIS to highlight and honor students and staff and the community, kind of like a student of the week, student of the month, Nobel Norman type thing. Um, and a couple other ideas that I'm not gonna share here, because we want it to be a surprise. But we're really looking to beef up the recognition piece and appreciate our students this year. Sorry, that was long.
Yeah, beautiful. Thank you.
Long and good, good luck.
Thank you so much.
And I'm just asking for my team, so, uh, because I think we've done a really good job from Mrs. Collins Williams to Mr. Stewart to really talk about those goal areas. The benefit is like, I think you did a really good job of explaining what those goal areas are. So now I would say really let's pinpoint kind of, you know, the specific areas just for your school, because I think we have a really good idea of like what those goal areas are. Um, I know that Dr. Skon had an appointment months ago that she couldn't change, so, um, thank you, Mr. Waters.
Um, again, this, uh, Dr. Collins.
Dr. Collins.
Um, Dr. Skon told me to ask you guys for apologies, she had to go to a doctor's appointment, she got rescheduled.
No worries.
Um, so you get the taller, slower version of her? She's a, and it, well, no, definitely taller. Um, so I, I will only talk about the days that are only site-specific, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Um, so let's get into it. So for our site, uh, BBMS will be characterized as a school that is on a continuous trajectory for success in the areas of academics, development, responsiveness, social equity, organizational structures, and processes. Excellence will be defined as a high-quality, complete, mature, and coherent implementation of practices and programs as measured by the National Schools to Watch, um, rating rubric. We will be applying for the, uh, National Schools to Watch this year. Um, based on the work that we did at Hawthorne several years ago, I feel very confident that we, um, will do very well, if not actually gaining that recognition. Um, I would say that having been the old guy in the district for such a long time, the things that we're doing at the middle school far exceed what we were able to do back when we were a K eight. Um, the programs and the things we're offering these kids is spectacular, and I'm proud to be a member of that. So, uh, thank you guys for your direction in making it happen. Um, academically, um, we are gonna continue with our CER program. Um, we are looking to get at least seventy percent of all of our kids, um, to reach the learning targets in each one of these course subject areas. Um, we will be administering them four times during the year. Um, English in September, math in November, science in February, history in April. We believe that, um, fidelity and implemented CR program along with our NWEA will dramatically increase our academic performances, especially on CAS. Um, looking to the current action part of this, um, we are going to continue to work on our community partnerships, um, increase gate opportunities. Um, and to enhance our career pathways, um, we believe that we are getting students ready for the high school and the high school programs. Um, there are some areas that we can continue, we just, just lose one of our beloved instrumental music teacher. And we have an interest in getting someone who's qualified and great, so we can continue to send these high-qualified students to the high school where they can, um, do well and pursue their interest in that area. Additionally, we are going to target the nearly met and not met students of all three grade levels. Um, one of the things that we're doing in order to do that is we've created special advisory classes. Um, our advisories meet only on Wednesdays, um, and typically those classes are designed for students to be able to go and make up work with specific teachers, um, to catch up on homework as needed. But in creating these different advisory classes, we've done so, so that we can get these students who are in these categories together in one room and implement our Alex, um, instruction and, and programs with them. So they have an opportunity to work and use that forty minutes every week, um, to bolster their performance. In addition to that, we have created a comprehensive intervention course, um, called Core Academy. Um, we have different teachers teaching in all four course subject areas, and we've targeted students who are performing at the, um, I'm sorry, at not met or nearly met and put them into those classes. Because students are placed in that class, they will not have one of their two electives. And so as you can imagine, um, electives are very popular here, so there's been some kicking and screaming about not being in their second elective. We're doing everything we can to try to keep those students in those classes so that we can address their academic needs and give them the support they need in order to be successful. Um, so I apologize in advance for you guys giving any calls on that. Um, I think the attendance piece has already, um, been, uh, mentioned, but at our site, we do also want to, um, express that. We do a lot with PBIS and, and one of them is attendance, so we are recognizing students. We had a no tardy party last year or so, kids who didn't have any tardies or who had excellent attendance were being recognized. We wanna make sure that we're recognizing people for things like that, because not every kid's gonna be a straight A kid. But with some effort and some prevention, you can go to class and be on time and do the best that you can. Um, in terms of our school-wide behavior, I can read you guys that, the goal of you want, but you guys, no? Yeah?
What's that, what makes you question?
The reading, I can read the goals for you guys?
I'm seeing, I see it.
Alright, cause, uh, I feel bad, you guys are gonna have to listen to all these other really nice people. Um, I wanted to talk just a little bit more, cause I think it does bear repeating. I think that there is a huge disconnect, not only with the parents, but also with the staff about what PBIS is. Um, PBIS doesn't ignore problem behavior. Schools should, we should focus not on discipline, but on preventative actions. And so when we think about PBIS, we're, we're teaching kids about what our expectations are in front of the behaviors. And our belief is, is that if we do that, and then along with progressive discipline steps, that we're likely to get better kids. Um, this is not an overnight thing. We're not like giving kids who get in trouble a lollipop and tell them to go on out the door. Um, but we are addressing behaviors as needed, but we're trying to get in front of it as much as possible, so that we're not focused just on discipline, we're focused on teaching, and that's super important. Um, one of the things that we're, we've taken great pride and great care in is that we're also, in, in, in terms of getting in front of things, making sure that all of our policies are clearly, um, enumerated in our parent-student and teacher handbooks. Um, we're also hosting parent universities, we have our first one coming up for sixth grade. Um, and in those things, we're going to talk about how to get your kid to be successful. Um, our goal in having it so early in the year is to get these kids off to a great start. Um, we're gonna have both parent and students come and sit down on the Q and A, because we believe that sometimes hearing things from us isn't enough. You need to hear things from your peers or other kids who've gone through the process and shown success in order for, um, people to really get the message. Um, other additional school-wide behavior action items, uh, monthly review of incident data with multidisciplinary team. This will be done through our instructional leadership team. Um, we also have grade level, um, meetings where myself, the grade level admin, and their counselors meet with the grade level teachers, and we discuss kids. Our focus isn't about, hey, this kid's a bad kid, or this kid did something, uh, that's inappropriate. Our focus is on what is working with these kids and how can we support them? Um, and it's interesting because we all have different chemistry and different, um, attitudes to people, but maybe something I'm doing might help you in your class, maybe something he's doing can help me. And as sharing these strategies and best practices, our hope is that we can support our kids and, and have them be, um, more appropriate. Um, in addition to that, we're gonna develop our parent education community, key, um, communication campaign. So we believe that it's important for people to understand what the current laws or reg- uh, regulations are. There's definitely a disconnect, I think that, how many times I've heard people say, oh, this kid needs to be expelled out of the district. Um, and what the kid did was inappropriate, it's, it's definitely not acceptable, but you don't go from step A to step C. Like, the nuclear option should never be your first option, right? Um, but we don't think our parents understand and know what those things are, so we need to help educate them too, um, and talk about what educational best practices. We also want to give more information on current district resources and support programs. There's some really great things happening at our school with our marriage and family counseling, our wellness center, our grade level councils, um, counselors. But we feel like if people don't know what those resources are, we can't get them to participate, that they're really missing out on some fantastic, um, opportunities. We also wanna continue recognition of outstanding students through our student support, um, student spotlight lunchtimes. Um, again, we do a really great job of having our, you know, our honors and principals' honors and, and giving all the accolades what they richly deserve. But we have some other kids doing some really great stuff on campus too, whether it be sports, the arts, um, even people are just giving their best effort, but still not getting the grades they might want to get. Those kids need to be recognized as well. Um, we also want to develop, implement, and communicate grade level appropriate behavior expectations. Um, we're doing that through our monthly admin chats, we just had our first one. Um, I will admit that I have not been a great PR person for our school. I know this because when people come for our, uh, prospective parent tours and we take them around, and we talk about all the things that our school has to offer, their mouths drop. They're like, oh my God, this is like a private school at public school dollars. I'm like, yes, you are, you're really good. However, I think that members in our community are not aware of all the great things that are happening. And so one of those are these admin chats. So not only are we having these conversations, but we are also sending messages out to the parent community about, these are the things that we're talking, these are the things that we're celebrating. Please have follow-up conversations with your kid. Uh, we think that there are great talking points, um, because, you know, you guys have all had middle school kids. When you get home, the first you ask them how they were, and they go, uh. As opposed to, hey, um, we saw that you had an admin chat for your person today, and you guys talked about how do you use the restroom, what are the procedures that you're supposed to go through? So it's just great talking points for, for families. Um, on the social emotional front, um, we thank you guys for all of your support and help getting our Bulldog Aid Center off the ground. Um, I don't know if you guys saw the video, it was fascinating, I've never seen anything like that before in my life, and I literally sat there and watched it. Um, I will tell you that there is not a day goes by that there is not a kid in need who goes there and doesn't get some help. Um, we had an eighth grade, um, person today who have an issue with a teacher and, uh, went in, had a really long talk, and then another talk, and was able to get back to class. And as we know, the more we get these kids into classes, the better we're gonna do. But we also wanna support our students, attendance is important. Um, we also have our counselors getting into classrooms and de- uh, delivering lessons. Uh, this month is on connections and how we go about connecting with people, whether it be our peers or with other adults on campus, or just how their life in general. We also want to increase participation, um, in extracurricular activities, whether it be clubs, athletics, and performing arts. Again, um, I think that we can do a better job of talking about all of these great things we're offering, because the new people come. But our people who are here are not always aware of all the things that we have to offer. We all know that involved students are gonna be better students, and, and they're gonna, the more we get them to invest in our campus, the more they're gonna get out of it. Lastly, rounding third, um, community engagement. We wanna provide parents with opportunities to volunteer on campus, this serves a couple of different purposes. Um, sadly, there's some false media out there about our students based on two or three different videos. I walked around our school today at lunchtime and I sat there, and I'm thinking, I wish that some of these parents could see what I see in our kids. They're on their reading green, and I'm gonna exaggerate for a second. I was like, how about a guitar, and you know, all these people around them listening. It's not quite that. But what you will see is these kids like bonding with one another and having a good time. So I walked through the atrium, and you know, there's like kind of computer people, and they're kind of doing their little computer thing. And then you go out in the yard, and there's all the jocks, and they're playing basketball and soccer. There really is something for everything. I know this because my next stop was to go upstairs to the library where, you know, I got my kids reading, and they're just kind of hanging out, kind of doing their thing there. If people don't know about these things, it does a disservice to us. And so these are areas that we're gonna work to improve on. We also wanna work a little bit better about communicating upcoming events. We wanna do that in two-week fashion. So if something's coming up, then we're continually communicating up to that so people know. Again, we wanna be our own best PR people. And then there's our weekly newsletter, we're gonna continue with that. We wanna also post things on the website. We believe that if we can start posting regular content on the website, that people will start to go there, and it can be a one-stop shop for people who have questions and wanna know more about our school. Additionally, again, I've had a lot of experience working at a lot of different schools. And some of the things that schools do are super awesome, like the grade level socials. Who doesn't love good food and alcohol? Wait, did I say that out loud? So we know that we can get parents to-
No, no, we have to tape for only-
And if we can get people to bond and get our parent community to come together and bond with our staff and bond with each other, well, that bond will become a strength. And it's something that we can use when we go through tough times. Listen, it's middle school, and it's all gonna be a rocky road sometimes. But if we have a relationship and that connection, having that, those moments we can kind of fall back on will help get us through. So those are really important things, we wanna start to work on that. We also on a monthly basis wanna update parents and teachers regarding our different policies, such as the cell phone, attendance, behavior, and safety. Lastly, we want to make sure that we're maintaining our school calendar. Apologies in this market is that two years ago, I failed to update something, she went to it a bit, that was been due to another day. That was on me, I'm so sorry. So we're gonna do a much better job at maintaining that and making sure that that information gets out to all stakeholders in the community, so they have an opportunity to participate and support us. And that is it, let's start reading questions for me. Sorry, I wanna do that kind of quickly, wanna make sure you guys-
I have two questions.
Yes?
Anybody else? Last year, you guys had your amazing tutoring program.
Mandatory?
Yes, the after-school program. Looking back, do you view it as a success? And if so, are you planning on implementing it again?
So if there isn't interest in doing it, we're still early in the year, so we have to find people who are interested in doing that in terms of staff. I think it was a success. With any program, again, we get out of it what people get into it. So when kids are forced in, but they really don't want the help, then that's not gonna work. So the goal then is creating a connection with the kid and getting them to see the benefit in the program. Those kids, I agree, I think that they got a lot of-
They did benefit, yeah. And we also had the high schoolers who came back and tutored as well, right?
We're definitely gonna continue to do that, that's good for everyone. You can never understate the impact of having someone, again, who's gone through that program successfully. If they have enough connection to school, they wanna come back, we want them. And I think middle school kids look up to them, and they're gonna try harder because they have their kind of big brother, big sister type to-
Thank you. And then how does it work with the advisory? So let's say I'm having trouble with math, English, and science. So how, which advisory am I put into, how does that go?
So what we did is we focused more on English or on math first. And then English would be our secondary because math is a problematic for us. So we grouped people by math. But during advisory, if you're a child who needs extra help, the teachers-
You can-
You can go, yeah. But we don't just let them kind of float around. Like they make an appointment with the teacher, like Mr. Schmidt does a great job. He will let us know ahead of time, talk to their advisory teacher, and those kids go to him. And what he did, which I thought was exceptional, we're open to doing this again, is that he identified kids who were struggling with his classes, and he asked us to move their advisories around so that they would be with him in advisory, so he would already have them. So we're really flexible in our thinking, we don't wanna be too rigid because that doesn't help students.
Got you. And it could probably change over the course of the year.
Hundred percent.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Dr. Scott, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Sorry, I wasn't sure who was supposed to tell me to come on. Hi, everybody, I'm Sarah Kaver, I'm the principal and author. I hope you have my picture printed, okay, good, I can tell that you do. So I have the same goals for academics, they're to increase proficiency by three percent. You can see the first page of that is our task scores. And we're very clearly talking about cohort data for ELA in math and science, non-cohort data. It's the first time that they can get, so we're talking about student increase. But more than fifty percent of our students on our campus, close to sixty percent actually, don't take the task. So you'll see below that we're also looking at other measures of proficiency. We're talking about the iReady, which we already have students that, most of our students have already taken that as their diagnostic test, and we're looking forward to time with iReady on September fifth to look at that and really understand what our beginning of the year data is. First, for kinder, first, second, and third grade, we all see the developmental reading assessment. And we're looking at, that's for fluency and comprehension. That's an assessment that can't be tested on DRA and needs to really be done one-on-one and on running record that elementary teachers are clearly trained on and know how to do. And that we refresh on all the time. In first and second grade, we use something called FactsWise, which is about math facts, automaticity. And so we have a goal of ninety percent of our first graders completing goal three, and ninety percent of our second graders completing to goal nine. It's a nine-goal additions correction automaticity piece. That's different from conceptual understanding, just the automatic understanding of facts and being able to use that. In kindergarten, our goal of eighty percent of students are at eighty percent proficiency on foundational skills. That's because their standards are written as most, some, beginning, they're all as a, because kindergarten's not compulsory, it all has to do with that they're being exposed. And then in TK, we have very clear, eighty percent of our students are at these preschool foundational standards. One-to-one correspondence to ten, eighty percent are identifying their name by the end of the year, eighty percent are identifying ten distinct letters, sounds by the end of the year. With a focus on our academic growth in our subgroups who are not showing growth. So those would be our English language learners and our special education students. But all of those are specifically targeting those students as well. When we're talking about our goals at Hawthorne, I, I have a link for fundamental guideposts, and I don't know if you have that on yours, but it has to do with what's the most effective pieces of teaching? What's the most effective ways of getting growth from students? And there's two pieces that we're really focusing on, collective efficacy from teachers, meaning that teachers have some say in what they're doing and they are on the same path. First graders have the same experience, so that when second grader, second grade teachers get them, they have very similar understanding of things. And so our work is to talk about collective efficacy. And in that, to develop conversations in our PLC groups. Those are professional learning communities that are talking about four basic questions of, what are we doing, who are the students that are not meeting our standards? What are we doing about it? Who are the students that are exceeding our standards? What are we doing about it? So that basically sums it up, that our grade level meetings really focus on those. In addition, the other piece that's really effective in showing growth is that if students are assessment-capable learners, that does not mean that they can take a test, but that they can assess where they are in their learning. And that is shown to be most effective if you're using learning targets, and that they know where the learning targets are. So a lot of our professional development will be working on using learning targets for language arts, math, and science. And that they'll be able to identify their progress toward meeting their grade level standards by assessing those. And then that there's different strategies for teaching to hit those learning targets in a variety of ways, either on a surface level, a deep level, or a level that would transfer knowledge between both disciplinary transfer and from grade one, grade five. The next piece is that students are gonna engage in structured student interactions. We are calling it that to differentiate from the word engagement because often engagement means compliance. And we're talking about actual engagement in a lesson, a structured interaction with other students. Meaning that you understand what you're learning best when you're part of the learning and you're part of the active learning of that. So you're taking time to talk about, digest what you're learning in your class with other students, and then being able to explain it. That it works when we learn about like really structured ways to do it in the hopes of developing some signature practices that everyone can speak around. So one of the ones might be big pair share, and that we all know what that means from TK all the way up to fifth grade. And then the next piece is just developing a student study team. We have a student study team, but really focusing on a multi-trade system of support in order to help our students. Attendance, we're following student services guideline. But we really are committed to using our data on a regular basis, which are grade level PLCs. Is there a correlation in any way with, between academic progress and attendance? And who is responsible for contacting students and making sure that people know? We're working with our PTA to do attendance evaluations at our quarter, quarter awards assemblies. We do hero assemblies quarterly. And personalized communication then incentives for individuals in subgroups that are chronically absent. And then again, back to our MTSS, multi-trade system of support. In terms of community engagement, we're trying to increase our attendance in events like parent university and PTA meetings. We're really hoping that we hit fifty percent or more from our EL families that are attending our ELAS meetings. We're pushing that this year. We're asking, we're hoping that ninety percent of our parents are attending back to school morning, which is for morning, if you're watching this. And open house, which is at the end of the year. We have some goals about communication home from classrooms and our newsletter. We're talking about teachers connecting to the Hawthorne PTA. That was something that teachers asked to be put into our strategic plan, that they really wanted to say that they wanted to connect with the community both directions. And to increase like our followers in Instagram and our public presence in social media. We also are planning to increase and expand a parenting language liaison program. So we're hoping to do it with ten parents, and then do a student process of that, which is also global peer ambassadors program. What that is, is that that's parents who speak both English and another language, and they're connected to other families. So if we have a family that speaks both English and Spanish, then that parent might connect with a new family that's where a parent only speaks Spanish and just wants, even though you can use Google Translate, just a personal touch about what's happening. And we've had many people that have been involved, and we're hoping to expand that program to include students this year, or students who are multilingual, to connect with other students. Again, social media presence, we're hoping to vary our times of our meeting. Traditionally Hawthorne's really been a during the school day, PTA and event meeting sort of campus. And that we're really working with our PTA and other places to increase the number of events that could be held after school, after the work day. And that we're, we're talking about getting our information out to all of our families. School-wide behavior expectations, we're still working on PBIS matrices. We are working on hero expectations with beginning of the year hero. Here's our behavior expectations, I'm pretty busy. Taught and re-taught. Though we're really spending time at every time we're together on a Wednesday morning, whether it's a staff meeting, professional development, or PLC, looking at data. And we're asking teachers to put in data into pre-referral interventions. Those are like handled in the classroom versus office discipline referrals, ODR. Those are things that are offered, handled in the office. If you can see later in that, in our action plan, it's like actually linked what those two behaviors are. I don't know how much is printed for you. That we're targeting signature practices. We used to talk about some of these signature practices as an intervention to behavior, meaning like when something went wrong in your classroom, you might have a one-on-one conversation. When someone went, something went wrong in your classroom, you might have, you might increase your proximity to the student. And now we've moved those to a signature practice of an expectation to develop behavior in our classroom before anything happens. That we're always teaching on hero expectations, that every time there's one negative interaction, there's five positive that are following. That's a pretty clear ratio, that you have some proximity, eye contact, daily positive acknowledgement, and one-on-one conversation with every one of your students every single day. It's not a big ask. At our most, at our maximum, we're at twenty-nine students in a classroom. And our expectation is that, and teachers feel very good about this, they were part of this conversation, that they felt like this could definitely be done. We're having an understanding between the difference between discipline versus punishment. When does it mean, when is it corrective versus when is it punitive? That we are calibrating behavior as either mistakes, mischief, or malice. And even so, all of those new consequences, but that we're moving those consequences to be appropriate, depending on how that works, right? And that all of our, all of our consequences will result in a loss of access, but not access to their education. And so then all of their consequences will have a restorative piece, a reflective piece, an instructional piece. And then we'll build upon that. We all know that we'll personally do the instruction about what happens when there's an issue, whether it's a mistake, mischief, or malice. There's a Hawthorne student handbook, and again, we're going back to MTSS. Social emotional learning, sorry, going so fast. Social emotional learning, a hundred percent of our students, we're gonna indicate that they have a trust built on campus. That's still really important to us, it was our goal last year, we're continuing with that same goal. A hundred percent of our students receiving emotional, a social emotional learning instruction by counselor. And that they can talk about their decision-making process. They, a hundred percent of our students are gonna be taught strategies for problem solving when they're independent. And then we hope that by the end of the school year, seventy-five percent of our third through fifth graders will be able to identify three or more of those strategies. Seventy-five percent of our K-two students will be able to identify one or more of those strategies. And seventy-five percent of our students can identify their decision-making during conflicts as evidenced by our student reflective sheets, which is something that we do whenever there's a student in our office for our disciplinary mission. And our counselors are doing our social emotional lessons on a via the counselor, sorry. The, the students are gonna receive a lot of training about problem-solving techniques that are gonna be consistent, and how to receive I-statements. Not just how to use them, but also how to receive them, because sometimes they get into blaming when number comes. Learning meetings are gonna be held that correlate to those lessons that are done with ACL. Parent communication continues to happen. We've sort of started to work on, thank you to Dr. Wardrop, that having the beginnings of what we hope to have someday as like an elementary aid center is something that we talked about in our behavior panel. But that we move our counselor and our MFT, no, not our counselor, our MFT and our shoe psychologists to be like in a sort of a, an area that has a classroom connected, where we're hoping to use to provide students with skills-based groups. Like we use things like Friendship Fridays, Team Building Tuesday. That would be tier-two support on a school-wide level. And we're hoping to use it there so that we can continue to build a space for those students. I linked our PBIS matrix, our awards, our rewards, our handbook, more tickets. And then our last goal, which is actually empty, is El Rodeo School. It's an additional goal that I, that we have that nobody else has, that is a successful opening of El Rodeo School. It's blank because we know that this is a working, also we'll have the school.
It's totally small part of the-
We're like an emotional standpoint more than, so there's gonna be a whole PBIS piece of this, right? We're gonna rework our behavior expectations, they will no longer be hero, but we're gonna work with our entire community and staff, students, to develop new PBIS behavior expectations. But there's so many more different pieces of this as we're putting them together. So because this is a living document, we're gonna continue to add to what does it look like to feel like El Rodeo successfully was opened. Hawthorne, it has a piece of us as a community going over to a brand-new building, and we're developing sort of a new identity while still keeping some of our own. Intentionally, I just wanted to be clear that when we started school, we really wanted to talk about the first five goals, be intentional about the academic piece and setting up this year. And so I really wanna say that we wanna make sure that one of our goals is that opening El Rodeo doesn't take over a year. And that we have a year of instruction, and we have a year of work and a year of growth. And we have a group of fifth graders that are not gonna make it over there with us. And so we wanna really be intentional that this year is about this year without, while still working on that. So you'll be able to see like on my Wednesday mornings of PD are full of instruction, PBIS, and, and culture building, that will be separate from the time that we're working together to build culturally, move to El Rodeo.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm pressing this, but it's not doing it.
Oh, when you're inside.
Okay.
I didn't know about that.
Any questions?
For, for your chart?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to confirm.
Yeah.
The blue and the percentage refers to met or exceeded.
Yeah.
Would you be able to please provide us a, a further breakdown? Because it's, it's, the levels are exceeded, met, nearly met, didn't meet to-
I absolutely can, I can link that. They were linked in what we presented in July. I just thought you had already seen it, so I was just trying, but I can link it back into my strategic plan.
Thank you.
It's, it's all right on those slides.
Thank you.
And then if you're looking at it, like fifth grade, those fifth graders, they're, they're twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three scores. That's what the last year's fourth graders earned.
Right.
And then as third graders, they earned that.
Got you, so these are tracking the same group, the same group? In fifth grade, they did this, fourth grade, and third grade.
We're hoping that they do this in fifth grade, they're current fifth graders. And so- And so, and a really normal.
A big goal, got you.
Yeah. Percentage for goal is 80%. That's pretty standard if you don't have any data. So our goal is always 80% for third grade as a, as a baseline goal.
But you can see like in math, fifth grade, it's third graders, they were at 74%, then they would get 87%. And now they're shooting for 90% of the grade level at meeting or exceeding state standards in math.
Thank you. Got you.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. What I, what I'd like to ask everybody else is.
Thank you.
If you could only point out the really salient points, we'll, we will read this. The board is going to read everything and we need to worry until our close time. But I want everybody, because you're spending the time here, to get a chance to talk. But if we really stick to what differentiates in your report and what we've already covered, the things that you would want us to focus on when we look at this.
Also, can we turn down the air conditioner if anyone else is in? It's a little cold.
I got it.
You do that, I'm going to start. Here we go.
Only Raphael does, he pays the electric bill.
Craig Buckbee, Principal at Horace Mann Elementary School, same five goals, academics, same things. We're looking at 3%. But also if we go back and look at our LCAP, important to note that we have needs with students with disabilities, African-American students and our English language learners. So for those subgroups, we're not only looking for a 3% increase, we're going to raise that to a 5% increase. Metrics, same thing as everyone else. We're looking at CAS scores, CAS, the sign scores, and I Ready. Exciting news, I got an email from today from someone I was not expecting to get this email from that said, "I've given the I Ready ELA assessment and I am thrilled at the data that I'm getting." So we're already seeing that missing data that we haven't seen. With the STAR scores, it was an overall. With I Ready, it's disaggregated. It is broken down so we see exact needs, not just reading. Super important to note. Metrics, yes, we talked about that. Action plan, data chats. We're going to do the Horace Mann. We've always done the three full days a year. We're also now going to do monthly meetings. Because with this more broken-down data, for our intervention groups, we can get much more specific. Whereas before the data showed that these four kids needed help in reading, now we're getting to those kid, two kids need help with breaking down vowel sounds and CVC words. So we can do shorter intervention spans for four to six weeks. Really give them very discreet instruction for their exact needs. Then me, get another group in to work on the next task. Action plan, nope, that was it. Attendance, same thing as everyone else. We're going to be using the new attendance policy. Moving on. Community engagement, we're going to seek to increase community engagement by increasing daily attendance, reducing suspension rates. Again, this is going back to the LCAP, so using the exact same wording. Increasing school culture and increasing parent engagement. Action plan, family math night, elementary literacy night, parent universities, and publicizing and inviting families to all community events. We're going to focus on inviting the community, not just Horace Mann. So that's how we're going to really try to increase community involvement. We also have a goal of school-wide behavior expectations. What's in, this one I'm incredibly passionate about. I not only want to teach kids, I need for them to internalize those problem-solving skills. I think after the behavior committee that we've worked with and all of the things that we've saw, seen and heard, what we're noticing is the kids may be taught skills, but I don't know that they're internalizing and putting them into practice. I'm trying to figure out a way to assess whether they're putting them into practice. We can look at office discipline referrals, but that only focuses on that group of kids that's in the office. How do I know that Laura is able to resolve a conflict on the playground? So we're looking at how to assess that in terms of metrics. Yep, yep, yep. Oh, again, data chats. Data chats not only focus on academics, they focus on social emotional support and behavior issues. So that's why I really like those full-day data chats. Because we dig deep into what the needs of each and every kid are. All right, social emotional learning. Again, I want those skills taught, but I want those kids to be able to internalize and use those skills. Very important. Action plan, they're getting the lessons twice a month with a research-based curriculum. So we have a map now of what skills those kids are learning. Those skills will be communicated with the community. So you'll be able to know as community members, as board members, as anyone, exactly what skills were taught that month and what the next month is going to look like in terms of skills. So that we all as a community have a common language. That's it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments?
I have one quick comment. I saw something that was surprising. As noted in the BHUSD LCAP, we will decrease the suspension rate for students with disabilities. Is that a problem over there? Is that, I, I.
That is a problem.
That's where we have the higher.
The highest, it's the first, I, maybe it wasn't, I just maybe caught it here. Was it mentioned in the other schools? That's what.
It's, it's district wide. If you look at our dashboard, students with disabilities is one of the subgroups that has a higher rate of suspension than other subgroups. Yes. So not only at Horace Mann, throughout the entire district.
I just noticed it here. But at the elementary school, I don't think of them as having suspensions already.
Oh, yeah. That's what I referenced, Mrs. Marcus, when I said our dashboard data is linked to the, to the actual document. If you click, if you go to that document, it's live and it takes you to the dashboard and you'll see where it breaks it down.
Thank you. Yeah.
Can I ask though, do you guys have any in-house suspension type of things? Or when you guys say suspension, or do you have like partial day suspension? Or how, is there any variety or flexibility in how you're doing that?
Yeah, we, I've spoken with Dr. Brady. What we're really working on.
Yeah.
At-home suspensions.
Yeah.
In our community. As I'm on camera.
They go to the beach.
Usually wind up at Disneyland.
Yeah, right.
So we are well aware that at-home suspensions, especially in our community, are not an effective tool.
So if I can piggyback on that, we were actually piloting a program at BV this year for in-school suspension.
So that's hard too. Because you have to find resources to watch those kids.
It's called, it's called our Alternative to Suspension Program.
Kind of like more like what we knew as detention.
Nope.
I mean, I wouldn't call it that.
It's actually during school and there's intervention with our MFTs. There's a curriculum, there's social skills. There's, there's some teaching of, about what they've done and trying to get them to understand that.
It's got two, two pieces that are really criticals. A, we don't get hit with attendance. And B, well, three pieces. It's not fun for kids because they don't get to be able to hold any other self-hold. And three, we get to teach them one in there.
They're still doing that. They still have access to their services and it's, it's taught by a credential special education teacher. So any students with IEPs in there, they're still able to access their services.
The resources to come.
But we're also, but we're also doing a restorative piece and they have to have some conversations and, and do some learning about what got them there in the first place.
Thank you.
So it's a pilot at middle school. We hope to expand it, but we started it there initially.
So it seems like you're not trying to expand the absenteeism through suspensions. You're trying to.
Correct. We, we're also trying to address that piece. Instead of just suspending a student, we're actually keeping them in school and working to address the issues that earned them that suspension as well.
Thank you. I have a question on the academics and maybe this is also for Dustin because it comes from the LCAP. But I, my understanding from, from last year's strategic plan is that we, the one year's growth in one year's time was not so measurable. So are we, are we doing that this year, but have we found a way to measure it? Or what's happening on that piece?
That's the 3% and the 5% that we're talking about. So everyone talked about increasing proficiency by 3%.
And 5%.
5% we're going for with those subgroups.
Okay. So you're, so in your definition of one year's growth in one year's time is those percentage increases. Got you.
In addition to, we did have the metrics of the I Ready and NWEA. So now that we've had all of our students be able to take a diagnostic and it'll at least give us a baseline of where the students currently are performing at. And then we're able to hopefully bring back that information to you guys, whether that be mid-year and the end of the year of that growth. Because a student may be coming into third grade, still not at third grade, grade level. So by presenting you task information does not demonstrate that that student did learn one years and caught up maybe to third grade by the end of third grade, especially some of our special education students. But it looks like our data is, isn't matching the need of the students. So we're not reading the needs of the students.
Got you.
But now we'll be able to say, listen, you know, 66% were here. And we can show you individual student growth, that type of stuff.
So, so the one year's growth in one year's time is really to demonstrate at least the progress?
Yes. So we're not holding any student back. We really are, if not trying to bridge some of those educational gaps, but ensuring we're still moving forward with every single student in the district.
Thank you. Understood.
Yep. I'm excited to bring you mid-year results from I Ready. Because we are at the elementaries and I know you're working on NWEA now. We've got most of our baseline data in. Usually takes teachers about two weeks. I don't know about Hawthorne. We are finding at Horace Mann, the assessment takes a little bit longer than we expected. So we may go into the third week, but then we've got baseline data. So by the time we see you again, we'll have a second set of data and we can talk about progress at that point.
Thank you.
I'll nerd out on data with you anytime.
Thank you. Thank you.
With regard to, you know, because this is a new practice for all the teachers and, and then increasing to monthly, your monthly down chat meetings, is that what you said? How was it going with getting the teachers on board? And I actually have the same question for Drew as well and, and for all of you really. Because it's just, it seems to me like that's the piece that's really going to be critical in all of these things that we're implementing is that teachers really have to be on board and be able to implement these systems, whether from the behavior or absenteeism or looking at the data and really following through with communicating merits and all of this. It's a lot of different things and different methods of doing things. So I'm just curious how that's going and, and if you have plans in place for teachers that are having trouble getting on board or it's not really getting communicated to them. So how do you measure whether the teachers are getting on board and how well it's getting adopted?
It's a big question. So when we talk academics, in terms of Horace Mann, I Ready. Teachers are finding, there were a few that were not real excited about the transfer over from STAR to I Ready. But most of them, because we've been really digging into data chats for five years now, they were pushing. They were the ones saying, "We don't have enough data." So for the past few years, the question has been, "Do you have everything you need?" And the answer has turned into, "No, we need more data." So for the most part, teachers are buying in. The email that I received today was one of the teachers who was not excited about the transfer. So she's actually now seeing, wow, I can take this data right now, today, and really start guiding my instruction with this data.
Can, can, not, not today, but at some point, can we be shown what the, what the data shows you all? Like what is, I would, I will nerd out with you too. I would love to see like what reports are you getting and then what are you able to do with those reports?
And I'll say with Dr. Brady's permission, I would love to invite any of you to one of the data chats.
Sure. I mean, a redacted version of the reports, of course. But I'm just interested to know, you know.
Once we, once we have the other protocols in place, we're going to have discussions with school sites about what reports we're running monthly and what they're looking at. And, and like we have versions of it, but again, standardizing it, but we can share those with you and.
But for, I apologize, but for NWEA and I Ready, you'll actually receive it as a parent.
Got it.
You'll receive it prior to even some of us being able to dissect it and.
I'll share with you guys in that case.
Yeah.
So does that mean parents are getting the same report that the teachers are getting?
Yeah, you'll have a, yeah, you'll have a explanatory guide with yours versus what the teachers will get. The teachers, we actually were bringing them together. So like with BV, I mean, use NWEA as an example because we go, they go first. So we kick it off with BV English where we'll be here at the district office in the morning and we'll walk them through their data. And then by mid-afternoon, we're working through scope and sequence to make changes if we need to, to anything that needs to be changed based off the data and the students that are sitting in our classrooms today.
Got it. Custom.
Yep. And so then the next day, it's like a turn and burn for us. It's, the next day is math, the following day is science. And then the following Tuesday is the high school. And so by that time, and then the same thing at each of the grade bands. They're using their grade level data chat meetings to be able to do the exact same thing at like first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to, colleagues, we're going to have to move into closed session. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to put this, the rest of everybody on the strategic plan, on the next agenda. Help us read the entire plan before our next meeting. And if there's any questions, we'll address it with Paul Beattie.
Thank you.
Okay?
And share it to you electronically.
And it's shared with us. Michael sent us some electronic copy. I'm very, very thankful that you all came today. I just, I'm already a half hour into my close and I have to get, we have to get obviously certain things done today. So I appreciate everybody being here. I'm sorry that we did not get to some of you. This plan is the best of what we think about when we think about what and how. And this encompasses it really, really well, more than I've ever seen sitting here. So I really thank everybody for all of your hard work in kind of showing us how we're going to meet our goals.
Yeah. Thank you. I will be reviewing the rest of it. I appreciate it.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. This is really fantastic and it is like another level. So you can really see the work in it and the thinking and it's really clear about. I can't wait to hear the rest of your presentations, but it is really, you can see the work. So thank you. I'm really excited about this year.
Remarkably impressive. It really is. It's, it's just to know exactly what we're going to do and how we're going to do it.
Yeah. It's incredible. It's really impressive.
Multi-promed, so many different layers and levels of, of interventions and innovativeness, innovation.
It's a group.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good luck. Cheers for being here.
And open if you're distracted.
Thanks, everybody.